Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 28th, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's just a couple seconds after 9:00 a.m., and we'll get started. We'll start with our flag salute, and Ms. Schwab will lead our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we will move to our consent agenda. I know we've had a request to remove item 18A by Supervisor Jones, and I believe staff has another item?
Yes, Commissioners, or Supervisor, I'd love to request that we take 14A and move that to a later date and pull that off the consent item.
Okay. Are there any other items from other board members that you'd like moved?
I have none.
No. Okay, any members of the public would like any items removed from the consent calendar agenda?
I see none, Chair.
I'm not seeing any. We did have a written comment with somebody asking us to remove some, but if they're not here to ask for that, then we just leave it? Okay, thanks for the correction. Then can I have a motion to approve the remaining items on consent calendar?
One second.
And roll call? Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move to item 14A.
And we just request just a continuance to a later date, and we'll be bringing that forward to you at a later time.
Okay, great. Any questions? Any public comment? Okay. We'll need a motion to continue that item. Thank you, Karen.
I'll move that. Do we continue? Okay, I move to pull the item off the agenda.
Thank you. And is this a roll call? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we'll move to item 18A.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, Chair for today. And Supervisors, my name is Kate Sanson with your Human Resources Department. The item before you is the standard adoption of ordinances introduced by your board at its prior meeting on September 14th, 2021. The ordinances implement compensation terms for the Deputy Sheriff Association, including pay raises and increases to special incentive pays. If adopted, the ordinances will be effective the next full pay period, which begins October 9th. Also proposed for your consideration are amended resolutions addressing pension contributions to CalPERS. As a reminder, your board approved these resolutions at its last meeting in order for legacy employees to pay a greater portion of their own fair share contribution to retirement costs. The edits proposed today are addressing clerical errors in the dates to align with the October 9th effective date of the ordinances. Since the intent of the board, as staff understands it, is for the entire compensation package to be implemented at one time, I am requesting your consideration of the proposed amendments to avoid any employees experiencing increased costs without the benefit of offsetting raises. I'm certainly available for any questions.
Thank you, Kate. Are there any questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Kate. Any public comment on this item?
Good morning, Supervisors. Rich Cervantes of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. The reason I came here today is to have you guys strongly reconsider moving forward with this contract. The point of contention mostly was Measure F. And last time I was here, I read an article from 2003 by the county CEO. And today, I wanted to read what was placed on the ballot 2006 for Measure A. This went out to the voters in 2006. In November of 1976, the voters of Plaster County approved initiative that adopted an ordinance into the Plaster County Code. This ordinance requires Plaster County Sheriff's Department sworn law enforcement officers' salaries be fixed at the level of average salaries of comparable positions in Nevada, Eldorado, Sacramento counties. This ordinance is codified as Plaster County Code Section 31240, Salaries, Plaster County Sheriff's Ordinance Initiative. Since this ordinance was enacted by the voters of Plaster County, only a majority vote by Plaster County voters voting on this measure can repeal the ordinance. If repealed, salary levels for sworn law enforcement employees in the Plaster County Sheriff's Department would be established in the same manner as other county employees through periodic negotiation between the Plaster County Board of Supervisors and the representatives for sworn law enforcement employees of the Sheriff's Department. A yes vote on this Measure A would repeal the existing ordinance and enable the Board of Supervisors and Plaster County Sheriff's sworn personnel to negotiate compensation in the same manner as other county employees. A no vote on this measure is a vote to retain the existing ordinance, and that was by Anthony J. LaBeuf, County Counsel, and also Sabrina M. Thompson, Deputy County Counsel. And the resolution was approved by both Supervisors Wegant and Holmes in 2006. There was a few other things that we've noticed with this contract. There are some flaws with it, and giving us more time and to be able to go back to negotiating table, we can fix those flaws. The biggest one that we've noticed was the field training officer pay. It's a capped pay rather than a percentage, and it also caps how many field training officers would be eligible for the pay for the month. That number is half of what we have right now. It caps at 12. We currently have 25 train officers between field and jail. It also doesn't address how working overtime with a trainee would operate as well. So there needs to be language that clears that up. And again, if we can go back to negotiating table, we can raise the concerns and address the concerns of fiscal unsustainability while also being able to get a contract that makes sense where we can still recruit and retain quality deputies.
Anyone else from the public like to comment on this item? And if there's others, please line up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I was here the last week, or two weeks ago, and I feel like you guys should really consider not going forward with your decision that was made. It seemed like both sides had very valid points about confusion of how the graphs came about, that you guys are determining the pay for. So I think it would be in everyone's best interest to meet and not move forward at this time. We live in a world of uncertainty right now, and I would really like to know we have our sheriffs for us if we have an emergency. I am very disappointed to hear that we're going to be cutting back what we would have in our county to keep us safe and to keep each sheriff safe, because there won't be enough people to respond, to help them. So I'd really, really appreciate if you would take a second and think the voters really wanted Measure F. They voted for it three times. And go ahead and meet with both sides, work out what the health insurance is that you guys are using, all the stats so they're agreeable to come to a graph that could actually be used instead of saying he said, she said, because that's a little bit not good, okay? We're like kind of past middle school, high school. We're adults here, and we should sit down and really look at what's happening here. Our safety is at risk. Your safety is at risk. My safety is at risk. And the voters have said, we want this measure. It was also brought to the attention that we were really close to making a deal, and no side could figure out why it didn't go through. And I think until you really explore that, I don't think moving forward and throwing it all away to just do something else makes any sense, especially if a lawsuit can come to the county. That's going to cost more money in the long run. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael. It's troubling that the board would usurp the will of the people and recall Measure F. I think you're setting a very poor precedence by doing that. You're not honoring, you're just doing what you think may be is best and ignoring the will of the people. And I think that will reflect poorly on you in the future, and especially with future elections. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jason Wedge. I wasn't going to speak on this. So just running through my mind, I was here last week when this was going on, and the rhetoric that I'm getting talking to, you know, a lot of people, you know, your constituents, is that it's pretty consistent throughout the board, is that your constituents feel that their constitutional rights was violated last week. And one of the big concerns that keeps coming up is that if you can do this, what else can you do? So moving forward, I would be very, very careful of what you guys decide, and I would really, God's given us two ears and one mouth, and that simply means we need to hear more than what we speak. So I would listen to your constituents, because right now, they're not too pleased of the decision that was made, regardless, you know, how it was based. You know, and being here last week, and I actually ran through the tape again a few times, and pretty much majority, if not everybody, was in favor of what you guys opposed. And so I would consider that moving forward is to listen to us. You know, we're the ones that put you guys there. You know, bottom line is, you guys do work for us. You know, I say that, you know, not to intimidate you, but, you know, we put you there because we trust in you to do your job and to represent us and to represent, you know, our sheriffs, which we saw last week. And so I just want to say, just what the people are saying, I would listen to your constituents, because that is the majority. What they're feeling right now is they feel that their rights are being stripped. We're seeing that on a higher government level, our rights being stripped. And now they're starting to feel that from a local level. And that is not a good spot to be in. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Sue Franklin from Roseville. I was here two weeks ago, but I left before the vote. But I did hear, and thank you Suzanne Jones, I heard you were the only one that stood up for the sheriffs. It's really disheartening, because you are there, seated there, and representing us, because we voted you in. So your constituents, you're really working for us. And you need to listen to the people. Like one of the speakers said, this world is crazy right now. And who's got our back? The sheriffs. They're out there putting their lives on the line every day. Every time they put on a uniform, they are there to protect us. And we're just asking that they have the pay that they really deserve. I mean, when you're putting your life on the line for people, and some people may be even bad, and they have to go in and help them, and you're saying they don't deserve a pay raise that's equal to different counties around us. It's just kind of, I can't even, down in my heart, know where it's coming from, that you vote no, or that you don't say, let's put this off and work with the sheriffs to make sure that they get what they deserve. They, I just, I have so much respect for our police officers, our sheriffs, anyone that is there to protect all of us. So as a constituent, I just, I just hope that you can reconsider and dig deep and find a solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And how many more do we have to speak here? We have one on Zoom as well. Are you the last? Okay, great. Thank you.
So my questions are COVID-related. I'm Jaclyn from Newcastle.
This is an item on 18A.
Oh, 18A.
So we're not on public comment yet. We'll be, we'll come to public comment in just a minute. So anyone else speaking on item 18A? We have one caller on Zoom.
Nettie, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having me. I'm calling in in regards to Measure F. And I'm speaking to the public here, just to let everybody know that Mastagni Law had put out a statement on Gold Country Media stating that they were going to have to do another round of litigation on behalf of the voters under the election law. And I would, it would be safe to say that the Board of Supervisors is not listening to their constituents. So I would behoove everybody to contact Mastagni, excuse me, and support them in that litigation effort. And you can do that by filing affidavits and support. And you can also do that by contacting them and asking them to file that litigation as the voters are being silenced, their First Amendment right is being silenced. And, you know, the Constitution is written in plain English, so I'm not sure why Ms. Schwab feels the need to interpret it. But I would just like to, you know, just reach out to the public and let everybody know that it would probably be best to contact Mastagni Law and help them in their efforts in regards to the litigation and Measure F. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair, I see no further comments. Thank you. So we'll close public comment on this item. Kate, there was some comments made by Mr. Cervantes. Did you want to address those on the additional, the flaws in the contract?
I'd be happy to. What I heard Mr. Cervantes note was a cap on field training officers at 12. That cap is in the existing contract that was approved by the board and the DSA in 2015. So there's no change to the cap on the number of officers. And the amount approved by your board is equivalent to the 5% at the level of a Step 5 for Deputy Sheriff to, at the time, in December 2020, when the offer was made. So beyond that, I would say, as discussed by your board, the county is certainly open to returning to the table to discuss the next contract for the DSA, and we'd be happy to consider any proposals surrounding this issue at that time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, board members, any comments, questions? Just to clarify, so the action that we're taking with this change in the contract, we are not reducing the number of deputies that are serving our public. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and in this contract, we are actually giving a 4% increase this year, four and a quarter next year, and 4.5% increase in the third year of the contract, correct?
Supervisor Gore, that is the content of the county's proposal to the DSA. What your board approved last week was the first year of that proposal. Your board invites the DSA to return to the table to consider future years. So we'd like to provide that opportunity. But at this time, yes, the action proposed today would confirm a pay raise for the Deputy Sheriff's Association as well as increases to other elements of compensation. It is not a pay cut.
Thank you. And I absolutely agree. I really, first, I want to say thank you for those who came up. And we're really thoughtful in your conversation and the way you approach us as a, having a nice civil discourse. I really do appreciate that, so thank you very much. And, you know, I certainly understand the concerns that you all raised. Our board has been negotiating for two and a half years with the Deputy Sheriff's Union, and that has been, obviously, it's been a challenge, because we, it took this long to get to a place where we felt like we needed to take this action. We aren't cutting deputy pay. They deserve good salaries, absolutely, which is why our board said we want to give more money, because currently, they're making 18% to 23% higher than the deputies in the other surrounding areas. So our deputies are well-paid, and we have wonderful deputy sheriffs, absolutely. This has been a challenge, but at the end of the day, you're right. We are elected by you, and our job is a very large job, which is to overall look at the needs of this community, which is absolutely public protection, as well as everything else in this $1 billion contract, which means parks, and roads, and libraries, and all the other things that our residents here in Plaster County expect. And if we cannot get a handle on future increases, we won't have the dollars available to make sure we can pay the OPEB and all the other expenses for our community. So this is a really, really challenging decision for me. And I wish we could have gotten to an agreement with the union. I really wish we did, but we couldn't. And it was really clear that we were unable to do that. I think this is the best decision. Our board ultimately has the responsibility to take care of the budget in our county, as well as we have the discretion on salaries for the entire, all of the employees here in Plaster County. So I am ready to move forward as we voted on last, last board meeting. And with that, I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you want to make any comments?
Just wanted to make the comment, yeah. For all the reasons stated at the last board meeting about Measure F and the charter superseding Measure F, I still do not agree that legally, the charter superseded Measure F in such a way, because Measure F was voted on by the voters. And so I will not be supporting these items today.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. Any other comments, Mr. Holmes? I wanted to make one final comment, too. And I think the confusion, and as was read earlier, is that Measure F, the language of it was clear. The voter's intent was that we would pay the average salary. I think what's confusing to many in the public is that our total compensation is not regulated by that, and that's where we're at 18% to 20% above the marketplace. So that's the struggle the board is having. Unless we can negotiate those terms and find reason, that's where we're out of balance with what the voters said, be in the average. We, as board members have all said, we support being above average. We want the best paid. And I think we're all committed to that, and that's why we authorized a salary increase with some changes in the future on the benefits. So with that, I'll call for a roll call vote on this item. Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
No.
Gustafson?
Aye. Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to our general public comment. And I've heard from a number of individuals. Just give me a second, and I'll announce how this is going to work. I'm going to try something a little different, and I'm going to see who gets up quickest of the two either. So we've had a lot of great public comment and participation over the last, I don't know how many meetings. But we are also hearing from members of the public who haven't had a chance to address this, because we've had to reduce public comment at times and wait till the end of the meeting. So what I'd like to do is see a show of hands of those, how many want to speak under public comment today that are here? And then also on Zoom, if you could raise your hand. So I've got about eight or nine, I think.
We have one on Zoom.
And one. Okay, so with that, we had allocated 15 minutes. I'm going to extend that. I'm going to go ahead and give three minutes at this time. We have always said, if we didn't get through public comment, we'd come back at the end, but it looks like we can accommodate everybody with a three-minute timed item. And then I would like to ask those who haven't yet had a chance to speak to the board, that you come up first. And if the rest of you who have spoken could be so gracious as to allow those individuals to come first. And then we'll alternate between who's here and who's on Zoom. Great, so welcome.
Welcome, Lee Bastian with the Sheridan Municipal Advisory Council. I'm here because we have a situation in Sheridan, a dangerous situation. We have a bad accident at Highway 65 in Rios Road. Last, four weeks ago, we had a three-car collision with three people going to the hospital by ambulance and one going by ambulance. The week before, we had two-car collision. Several months ago, we had a fatality there. You can see the memorial there at the base of the street light. And then several months ago, we had two semis collide. And right now, the normal commute, as the traffic backs up from Main Street in Wheatland to the Rios Road during the normal commute. But right now, we don't have a normal commute, because the pumpkin farm is open in Wheatland, and they're expecting over 200, they're expecting about 200,000 visitors in the two and a half months they're open. The other thing is, the city of Wheatland is building 545 additional homes right now to add to the commute. We, there are two project, traffic projects that have been approved, but they are on the lower end of the priority list, and we would like to see them moved up if we could. The first one is an interchange at Rios Road and Highway 65. And Caltrans has, by my understanding, has purchased the land for the interchange. The other project approved is the Highway 65 Lincoln Bypass 2B, which is, which, which makes it, adds two lanes, goes from two lanes to four lanes, from West Weiss to the county line. And we would like to see something done, because we're getting tired of taking people out in ambulances and stuff. And I thank you for your time. And I did, I did make this presentation to the Plaster County Transportation Planning Agency last week. Thank you.
Kathleen, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kathleen Crawford, and I am commenting today more in asking a couple of questions about the Deputy Sheriff's data. I understand from Cindy Gustafson's recent comments that this is really much more aimed at curtailing benefit costs and benefit increases, and yet I haven't seen much data on that for the public to get some idea of what it's absorbing. And again, I believe that many members of the public are confused and angry about imposing a contract upon the Deputy Sheriff's. So I believe that you need to have more information out there so people can understand the difference between a salary and the total cost of compensation, which includes benefits, retirement, and a lot of other factors. And let's get some comparison information on those factors from the other counties that are involved in the average, both Sacramento and Eldorado, so that we're in a better position to be actually negotiating in good faith and not imposing a contract that is unnecessarily difficult for the sheriffs to see as being equitable. So those are my comments. I appreciate the discussion today, which was much more civil. And I believe that getting information out to the public that has more data involved could be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Madam Chairman and Supervisors, I did submit what I'm going to read to you today. I only mention that because there are some visuals that I wanted you to see. So my name is Larry Farina. I'm a land development consultant, and today I'm representing Mr. Jan Haldeman, a local builder and developer that has been developing properties in the Auburn area and throughout Plaster County for over 40 years. I want to bring your attention to two infill projects in North Auburn that Mr. Haldeman is trying to develop. is trying to develop. Mr. Haldeman has worked with county staff to build attainable-priced housing in North Auburn. Both of these projects are within walking distance of three shopping centers, a school, a hospital, and doctors' offices. The first project that you have a picture of in front of you is called Gateway Commons, a nine-unit duplex project that will be sold as eighteen individual dwelling units of nine hundred and forty square feet, with eight of those units having six hundred and twenty-four square-foot ADUs built on the lower floor. This project is fully entitled and is ready to pull permits to start construction. When this project received planning commission approval, an article was published in the Auburn Journal. I'd like to read a couple of quotes from that article. "Haldeman Homes Project is a wonderful example of a developer opting to offer multi-generational housing option to meet the increasing demand for more affordable housing in Placer County," said Placer County Principal Planner, Shawna Purvines. Second quote, "Gateway Commons provides the practical type of housing for first-time buyers or those looking to downsize," said Placer County Planning Commissioner Wayne Nader. "There is also an opportunity to create rentable space with some of these new homes, thereby adding to even more housing which is urgently needed in the area." And lastly, "Haldeman Homes decided to invest in reasonably priced housing in our community once we participated in the stakeholder group and learned firsthand that the housing crisis facing our community," said Jan Haldeman of Haldeman Homes. With this, the publisher of this article and this kind of support, Mr. Haldeman decided to take on another project called Gateway Village, the second picture in your handout. This project is on the same street, across the street, in fact, from the Gateway Commons project. This project would consist of twenty-seven single-family homes on a two-point-nine-acre parcel, the homes ranging in size from nine hundred and fifty-nine square feet to fifteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. Again, the intent is to create attainable-priced housing. What I'm here today to tell you is that these projects have been canceled, or at best put on hold indefinitely, due to the issues that Placer County has decided need to be resolved at the developer's expense. You are probably all aware of the sewer main capacity issues in North Auburn on the SMD-1 system. Due to past managers of the collective system, due to past managers of the collective system not planning ahead for future growth that has taken place, the system is at very near capacity and will not be able to accept future developments without upsizing the system. The Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance 5943B in February of 2019, which was supposed to help fix this situation. May I? Thank you.
Rapid.
According to this ordinance, all developers are supposed to pay a fee into the system to pay for sewer line upgrades, but in the event that the upgrades are needed before there is money collected to do so, the burden to do those upgrades falls on the property developer. In this situation with Gateway Commons, the upgrades would cost four hundred thousand dollars. The ordinance guarantees that a developer will be paid back for this work as funds become available. No guarantee of a timeline and no return on investment while waiting to be reimbursed. Based on the formula in the ordinance, there will have to be three hundred and sixteen dwellings added to the system before this reimbursement can be accomplished. One might think that the cost could simply be passed on to the future home buyer, until you keep in mind that the concept of this project is to provide attainable pricing on the homes. The developer was already required by Placer County to do a sewer study at his own expense to show the county where the problems in their system are and how to fix them. This study alone cost twenty-five thousand dollars. When I asked the county why they did not have this information or do the study themselves, the answer was, "We just don't have the time." Their answer to the problem is let the developer pay for it.
Larry, I really appreciate this. Can we wrap? Are you going to read?
Yeah, I'm one paragraph off, okay?
Okay.
"When you add all the fees, traffic mitigation, tree mitigation, sewer expansion, park fees, and the required environmental studies, sewer study, and project engineering design, the developers already spent four hundred thousand dollars before the project is even approved, and that does not include the cost of the land. While it appears that the Placer County planners want this kind of lower-priced housing in these infill sites, Placer County Environmental Engineering, engineering, surveying, and public works departments have made absolutely no effort to aid in this endeavor. In fact, they do not even consider what is trying to be accomplished. They just expect the developer to pay for whatever each department feels is necessary." I'll close here. My suggestion, if I may be so bold, is that the county would actually spend their own funds, upgrade their own sewer line, and collect the fees based on their own program that they have in the ordinance that they passed. I think it's a little bit ridiculous to expect developers to do that. The last point, just to make this, put this into perspective, is to ask each one of you if you'd be willing to invest four hundred thousand dollars in a project with absolutely no idea when you're going to get that four hundred thousand dollars back and no return on your investment when it does come back. And if you're interested in that, we'd love to have you as a partner. If you'd like to meet and discuss any of the hindrances we have experienced while trying to develop these properties, I will make myself available at any time to do so. Thank you very much for the time and the extra time.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. And if there's others for public comment, we don't have anyone else on Zoom, but I'd ask you to go ahead and line up so we can get through our public comment quickly.
Good morning, Scott Vaughn, Granite Bay. Been coming for six years. Super good. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Tree Lake Village Homeowners Association. I'm delivering two, and each of you will be receiving by certified mail, a formal request for information from the HOA's legal counsel. The letter requests information that affects the quality of life for the seven hundred and thirty-four families represented by the HOA who have a legal right to know a number of facts. These include the disposition of the remaining twenty acres of undeveloped land, which was formally identified as open space for open space uses in the Tree Lake Village EIR, certified by this board in nineteen eighty-seven; how commercial business is continued to allow to operate without any mitigation, not a tree, not a shrub, anything, lighting, so in our residential neighborhood; how a fourteen-acre, hundred-thousand-square-foot mini storage facilities allowed to operate with a single egress that in the event of a fire or any of emergencies that first responders and evacuees have to use. These three items remain in perpetuity. I'm requesting that in the interest of open and honest governance, that this board directs county staff to provide the public information requested. And I think I have a meeting scheduled with most of you supervisors to provide you the information to support this. I've met with you many times before. This is a glaring hole in open and honest government, because we get no answers. Ms. Schwab has told us many times before, we're not allowed the answers. It's privileged, which seems quite odd, since zoning is the backbone of any development. So I would ask that you take a look at this HOA's request, that you supply the information. I've also included the request we had in two thousand and seventeen that was ignored, and that wasn't provided. I look forward to meeting with each one of you. Thank you for your time. No, that's all right. Hay fever season.
Good morning again, Board of Supervisors. I just wanted to kind of recap what Larry spoke on, is that Placer County received forty-four million dollars in CARES money, and we talked about return in investment. I mean, what he, you know, alluded to, I think that would be a good opportunity to, you know, invest some of that money for the internal investment for this community. So enough on that. Haven't really prepared too much, just kind of want to just recap of what we've been coming up here speaking on for many months. And I say this just because, you know, we got an army of, you know, a community behind us, you know, and quite frankly, you know, you put us all together. We are a whole lot heck smarter than you guys. And one of the things that we brought to you guys on June eighth was AB two-six-two and AB three-eight-nine. I don't know if you remember that, but it was just kind of educating you guys as we was educating ourselves, because AB two-six-two was passed in two thousand and nineteen. And basically, it gives authority to the, to the local health official. And everything that's going on, you know, if you really track that and, and if you really pay attention to what's going on in Australia and New Zealand right now, I mean, we're, you know, we're right on their coattails right now of what's going on over there. And so I just say that is, you know, some of these resolutions that we brought for you, you know, one in particular was for the COVID passport. And we never saw that on the agenda, but recently, we've seen two counties, Tahima County and also, I believe, Sutter County pass similar resolutions on, concerning a COVID passport in their counties. So I really encourage you to retake a look at that resolution, because as things move on, just if we, just if you look back at what we spoke on June eighth and you look forward to today, a lot of things that we were saying and educating you guys on are starting to come, you know, we're starting to see them, you know, come, you know, here we are today. And so I emailed the clerk of the board and a few others. One of the concerning things on the agenda, number seven on that, and I haven't had a whole lot, lot of time to really take a look at that, but I would, there's just so much there, so much information. One of the things that really concerned me, you know, when I was looking at project room key on that, they have direct ties into FEMA camps. And so there's a lot of layers, a lot of things still to look at that, but I would pass item number seven today, and, and a lot more research needs to go behind that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. I'm back, sorry, jumped the gun, but thank you for allowing us to speak. I had emailed the board clerk on September thirteenth after hearing Dr. Oldham's.
I'm sorry, I don't know that we got your name for the record.
Jacqueline.
Jacqueline, thank you, thanks.
On September thirteenth regarding questions I had had in the board presentation of Dr. Oldham's, and I never received a response on those, so I'm going to just reiterate those questions here. One of the questions I had were, how are cases being defined? Which tests are being used? If they're PCR, has there been a standard cycle threshold set to avoid false positives? Are the tests that are being used currently under the emergency use authorization, or are they fully approved? And are they the ones that are, have been polled as of December? And what is, I'm not familiar, I don't understand what the other test, there's like a rapid test, what is that testing for? Another question I had was, how is the Delta variant being identified? How, how is that being, is there a test that's being used to identify the Delta variant versus regular COVID? What is the relation of the flu or cold to COVID? And then in, in September, Dr. Oldham was mentioning that there are, there's a high number of cases and a high number of hospitalizations due to COVID, but I was curious if there were, you know, if much of the respiratory distress was caused by the smoke. I know my sister-in-law and my brother were sick. Actually, my sister-in-law ended up contracting double pneumonia. She has asthma and, and it was right during that whole time with all the poor air quality and smoke, so I was wondering if that had any effect on respiratory. And then how are vaccinated versus unvaccinated being identified? Because Dr. Oldham was saying that it's mainly unvaccinated in the hospitals, but I have read that according to the CDC, a person is considered unvaccinated until fourteen days after the second shot, and in Israel, you are considered unvaccinated if you haven't received a booster. So how are we identifying unvaccinated versus vaccinated? How are vaccine reactions being recorded? Like what is considered a vaccine adverse event, and are they being reported to VAERS? I know people who've died shortly after receiving the shot, and I also have friends who are in the medical field who are seeing cancers, like a high rate of prostate cancer in very young men, that is highly unusual, who are vaccinated. So are we looking into those kinds of things? And the board was excited about, or Dr. Oldham was excited about a high rate in vaccine uptake, you know, due to all the coercion of medical professionals. I'm almost done. But, you know, these medical professionals, I have a friend, a good friend, who's moving to Arkansas, because in Arkansas, as a medical professional, she doesn't have a vaccine mandate. And then people are being bribed with gift cards. There was a woman who called in who was super excited that, you know, these people were going to go get shoes because they got a vaccine. And then the approval of the Pfizer shot is concerning, because there's, you know, the one that is approved isn't available. And I know doctors who are being told to remove vaccine-related events from records. So is that being looked at or addressed, or can we confirm that? And then as far as the hospital workers, I know that they're, they're moving out of state. I have good friends who are moving out of state because they do not want this experimental shot. So, you know, all of these questions I asked at that meeting and, and again, in email, and they have not been, I have not received a response.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael. Yeah, I haven't, I was in attendance in that meeting as well, and I haven't seen any response from Dr. Oldham. Okay. The other thing that I noticed is, from time to time, Placer County posts on their Facebook page and social media advertisements for, for people to get the vaccine, and yesterday they posted one, I probably can't see it, but that talks about getting your boosters and who's available, you know, how you, who's eligible to get the booster, and how important this is. Anyone aged eighteen and older can get, can get the booster and all this stuff. And I'm just, was wondering, like, why is Placer County in the business of promoting the vaccine? It just seems like an inappropriate use of taxpayers' resources, especially, especially considering other things. And my wife has sent the board and Dr. Oldham a number of questions and documentation on COVID and the, and the, and the thing that they call the vaccine, and I was, just wanted to touch on, on a few of those things. She's asking, why does Dr. Oldham use his authority given to him under AB two-sixty-two to require all doctors in Placer County to record deaths and adverse reaction in VAERS, as well as requesting the CDPH to begin to track and record this information? And there's no response. Okay. So you guys all have, we're on the email, maybe, maybe you don't read your email? I don't know. Let's see, some other things. Placer County got a hundred million during the great COVID debacle. So I don't know, so maybe, maybe that money comes with ties that you have to promote the vaccine. That's concerning, if that's the issue. And then she says, "Doctors and nurses here in Placer County, Sutter and Kaiser Hospitals, are claiming that COVID is not being treated properly, that doctors are not allowed to write prescriptions for hydrochloroquine or ivermectin, that pharmacies are refusing to fill prescriptions for these drugs. Most frightening, the adverse effects of COVID vaccine are not being reported." And then a little bit more, oh, hurry, hurry, hurry. Also, "The AMA is coaching the medical community on how to, how not to answer questions from patients and how to use psychological and linguistic tools to misdirect and deceive people." It seems, that seems like a bad thing, huh? The other thing that I want to talk about real quickly is fair elections. I participated in the last election, and I was just wondering what Placer County is doing to ensure that we have fair elections, and Chair Waggant said that Mr. Ronco could do something, show us what, what you guys are doing, would be very interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Again, I'm going to ask, how many more are here to speak under public comment? Seeing the three here? Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Derby, and I have notes, but I always go off on tangent. But anyways, I wanted to ask why I saw a commercial promoting the fact that we are going to have mobile vaccination sites on school campuses for junior high and high schools when I thought that you guys were not going to allow something like that, and it really makes me sad, because there's a ninety-nine point nine-nine percent survival rate for children. My kids got COVID, and it didn't do anything to them. They're fine. I got COVID, I'm fine. My parents got COVID, they're fine. This is insane. There's so many viruses, you cannot isolate a virus. It's impossible. Also, my daughter has a job. She had to get tested, and you know how hard it is to find a test? Everything's out of stock, and then when you get a test finally, you have And then when you get a test finally, you have to register it online. That says government psyops all over to me. That makes no sense. Also, let's see, the death rate. AFDLS called for immediate stop to the vaccines because the VAERS whistleblower had up to 45,000 deaths of the vaccine being administered within 72 hours. But there's a lawsuit for that because we're trying to hide numbers. I do have numbers for August, I, I can't find September for some reason. But through VAERS, the deaths, 13,000, that's just one reporting site too, by the way, there's three of them, 13,000, but it's really 45,000 if you look at the lawsuit, which you can look up, it's, it's public. Um, urgent care, 72,000, Bell's Palsy, 4681, doctor visits injury reaction, 98,761, permanently disabled, 18,000, the list goes on, there's a lot here. Okay, so there's a lot of reactions happening to the vaccine and they want to put this on our children. And then if they're 12 and up, they don't even need our consent. And they also put mental health counselors on campuses to say, oh, your child looks like it has, she has a problem. I'm sorry, but I have health insurance for that. I don't need my kids to go to school to, to be picked on. They need to go there for an education. It's disgusting that we're allowing this. It goes against the Nuremberg Code, which is experiments done on humans in a really horrible time in history, the Holocaust. Everybody is sad about the Holocaust, I would surely hope, and that's what's happening right now. We are trying to depopulate and we're going to a guy that is a computer programmer that is investing all the money and all this stuff. And, and he thinks he has a cure, even though he wanted to populate the world by 20% with a vaccine. So the tests, the money that you guys also supported, which was billions, and I have the number somewhere, I don't know how to say the number, it's so big, but almost nine to 9.2 billion in partnerships with health and school departments. And the grants, Prop 98 with the partnerships of services to, for the Corona relief funds, is that why we're following these guidelines? Because you guys think they're just guidelines, but people are pushing them on us and it's, it's sick. And my kids can't breathe in a mask and I will not ever have them in a mask unless they're really sick, which still is gross.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I do have a couple callers on Zoom. Let's go to a Zoom, um, and then I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Marcel, unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, good morning, Board. I've been working as a hospital RN for over two decades. And the manner in which I have seen this entire pandemic being played has been so disturbing. It is evident that the manipulation of data, the focus on confirmed cases and the botched science are going to continue to be pushed on us with an agenda of a segregated society. Segregation and vaccine passports have no place in a civilized society. They don't even have a place in ethical medicine. I cannot speak for the medical professionals who are going along with this, except that they are under a spell. But I can tell you that these very professionals are forgetting the very oath they took to protect the right of autonomy of the individual and just in fair treatment of them as well. The PCR test is not a diagnostic test. And yet, it's being used to dictate what public health measures are to be put in place affecting the millions of the state with absolute recklessness to the negative consequences. Our health authorities want everyone to test with this emergency use authorization test to justify everything they are doing when the PCR test can pick up ancient flu or coronavirus fragments and can easily be manipulated to make anything positive if you turn the amplification cycles high enough. For this reason, it's about time that we are being told how many cycles these tests are being run. And I am calling on Dr. Oldham to find out this critical information and start reporting this along with the confirmed cases he reports. The only test for live viruses is viral culture. PCR and lateral flow tests do not distinguish live viruses. No test of infection or infectiousness is currently available. As things stand, a person who tests positive with any kind of test may or may not have an active infection with the live virus and may or may not be infectious. I have the BMJ article, I would love to, to email you guys to back that statement up. This entire narrative that asymptomatics are a danger to society has never been proven and was yet another reckless assumption that was made by authorities further dividing our society and creating unnecessary fear. I have yet to see our authorities tell us to check our vitamin D blood level, to increase our vitamin C and zinc intake, to lose weight and go outside for a walk. Instead, our authorities have created fear. Creating fear is a weapon with destructive consequences. Bribing people with money and the worst foods imaginable is the weapon I have seen authorities use. Creating fear has done nothing to improve anyone's health besides wreck it. I am calling on the board and Dr. Oldham to do the right thing and stop pandering to the fear tactics. Dr. Oldham, I am asking you to uphold your oath to do no harm and to protect autonomy and justice. I am opposed to a segregated society and I am opposed to mandatory medical interventions such as masks, PCR tests and vaccines. I am and always will be opposed to vaccine passports. And I ask that you assure Placer County, these will not be welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one more caller on Zoom and two here, and then we'll close public comment at this time. Uh, so go ahead here in the room, you come up and then we'll go to Zoom and then we'll finish with the woman behind you. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Wendy Beal. I am with Moms for Liberty, Placer County. Uh, just a few things. I did watch the meeting last week. I was actually at the Board of Supervisors meetings for Sac County, um, the last Board of Supervisors meeting that you had. And what I can say is it is a stark difference from the board here. Um, and I can also say that living in Placer County, I am very thankful because we wouldn't still be in California if it weren't for all of you and the work that you have done to keep this county moving and are supporting our small businesses. I am a bit concerned about what has happened in terms of repealing Measure F. The people spoke, so I don't know why there couldn't have been some sort of compromise in the negotiating and, um, the way that that was done. So what I will say is just in talking to people in the community, I, I believe that it has created distrust for some of these board members. And I'm hoping that you all are able to bridge that gap somehow. In moving forward with this contract for the sheriffs, um, my concern is also just how that's going to affect them once this board leaves, um, or, you know, if this board leaves. Um, so I wanted to mention that I know and I'm learning more about the Board of Supervisors and what you guys can and cannot do. We are here to advocate. We are Moms for Liberty, Placer County, and our mission is to unify, educate, empower parents and the community to protect their rights in all level of government. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan group dedicated to promoting the ideals of liberty, individual rights and limited government. We are here to support our elected officials that believe in this mission. And I know your guys' hands are tied in a lot of the educational issues. Um, what I can tell you is our public schools are falling apart. Over 600 students from Rockland Unified have left the district. If they force this mandate, I see a large amount of families, um, leaving. I'm here today to offer a branch of support to the community for those of the, you, for those of you that want freedom to choose for your child, so that they can go to school and breathe fresh air, for those of you that want the freedom to make a choice to vaccinate or not vaccinate your child. Um, and absolutely, that, these studies have no longer, just one more minute, if this is okay. We at Moms for Liberty, Placer County are forming homeschool pods. We are offering tutoring and resources and empowering families to leave this failed system if it continues to fail us. We are working to elect members of the community who want to fight to maintain these rights. This should be in a, um, and overall, we are here to stop normalizing schools dictating conditions for the students to access a free and public education. Join us. And just so that you know, we do not co-parent with the government. And so that is what we stand for at Moms for Liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. Okay, I see somebody else has joined the line. I really, I mean, I mean, I had announced several times, please line up. I'm so sorry, but we're, okay. I'm sorry for that. We can take public comment at the end of the meeting, but we're going to close after these last two public comment items. So Zoom and then you, ma'am. Thank you.
Nettie, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, thank you. Uh, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, the people. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it. And to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. We, the people, govern ourselves. And the line has been clearly drawn in the sand. It is time that the Board of Supervisors pick a side. You can no longer sit on the fence and waver between freedom and communism. The people will not stand for it. We are done and we understand that you are not listening to us. We've put resolutions forward requesting that you speak for the people because that is your job to represent the community, to represent the people. We have told you that there will be forced vaccinations. We see that FEMA is coming in through Project Room Key and that the county is using our taxpayers' dollars to house homeless within our communities. Our community of Placer County is becoming unsafe. And the reason it's becoming unsafe is because our, our county and our nation is being dismantled from within. It's coming from the top down and the bottom up. And it's being done through egos and through blood money. And as Placer County continues to accept the money, we will continue to lose our freedoms and we will continue to lose our liberties. And it's time that people stand up and do civil disobedience and stop complying with the masks and stop complying with the false mandates. The more you comply, you continue to give your freedoms away. And the people that are sitting up there expressing what's called arbitrary power do not have power over us. They do not have the power over your children. So it is time for Placer County residents to make a stand and stop complying. Stop asking for permission to live your life. Stop asking for permission to keep your children from being abused. The time is now or you will be forever on your knees and continue to pray. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for waiting.
Sure. Hello, Placer County Board of Supervisors. My name is Yvette Horn. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your service. On behalf of citizens, we appreciate all that you do. Um, I just have a few comments. Uh, I'm a parent of a high school student at Placer High School. I recently had a student that graduated last spring and unfortunately, he was a casualty of COVID-19 halfway through his junior year. All of his senior year, no sports until the very end of the senior year, very limited, no social events, nothing. It was devastating. I can tell you from on behalf of my son and all his friends, it was devastating. These kids worked so hard and the measures that were taken were just, it was horrible. I have some, and I also have a son that's a junior at Placer High School. So, um, you know, I'm speaking now on his behalf and all the other students. I also represent a group of parents that are forming called Placer Union High School District, Parents for Choice, because we're an advocate of choice, for choice for vaccines, choice for testing, choice for masking. COVID-19 vaccine is experimental. The FDA really did a bait and switch. The only licensed approved vaccine right now is Pfizer Cumarnity. Pfizer Biotech remains under EUA status, emergency use authorized status. A lot of people aren't aware of this. The only Pfizer vaccine that is currently available in the United States is Pfizer Biotech. So people are unwittingly getting that vaccine thinking it's approved, legally licensed approved. It's not. Pfizer Cumarnity is not available in the United States. It has not been manufactured and who knows when it's going to be manufactured? That is a fact. Right now, I know you're limited in what you can do with the schools, but I just have some comments just on behalf of the student, parents and students. Uh, right now, parents and students are faced with mandating vaccines, testing and masking in schools effective January 1st. So you have to get vaccinated, you have to get tested each week, and you have to continue to mask. That's what's coming down the pike right now in the state of California. And, um, I, it's outrageous. We also know, um, you know, that the vaccine mandates and the vaccine passports, that's also coming down the pipe effective, probably in January, the, the state will probably pass legislation for that. All of this is unconstitutional and I'm asking for the Placer County Board of Supervisors to please take a stand on behalf of the citizens in this county. Please, 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 we are counting on you to stand up for our rights. We, we really appreciate anything that you can do on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone, um, for public comment today. And I do believe at least some of the answers have been posted online. And I'm going to ask, uh, our county CEO to provide that link to some of, I think, Jacqueline's questions and other comments that were made.
Yeah, so one, thank you. So obviously, we've had a number of questions of folks asking that they've submitted questions and haven't received a response. One of the things we've tried to do is address these questions so they're not just going back to the individual, they're going back to the, the masses. And so what we do, we have a FAQ section in, under our public health page. It's the annual or quarterly, actually, it's not quarterly. They, they do an update around COVID fairly frequently. The most recent COVID update, uh, under, um, uh, the public health area really speaks to many of these questions that were asked. Let me, uh, give the quick link, it's actually fairly long, but, I mean, you can go to our website as well and dial in. It's, uh, obviously, placer.ca.gov backslash document center, all one word, backslash view, backslash 54922, backslash COVID update 93 final. So a long link, um, but we, we can provide that to you. The FAQs give answers to all the questions or many of those questions. If there's anything different, uh, please reach out to your individual supervisor. You can also contact me directly, um, and I will appropriately get that, uh, those questions answered. But we're trying to address them in a more organized manner through our FAQs based on the questions that were raised during public comment and ones that have been submitted to date.
Thanks, Todd. Suzanne?
Yes, I just have one request, Todd. Would it be possible to put that link on our agendas, somewhere on the agenda for the next couple of months while we navigate our way through COVID? Just because most people will easily go to our agenda and they could find that website probably much easier if we could do that.
Sure, I, I would, we'll, we'll make that available.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any board member reports?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, I did want to let everybody know that a couple of weeks ago, I swore in the new fire chief for South Placer Fire District. It was quite an honor. The new fire chief is Chief Dur. And then this past Sunday, I had the honor of attending Eagle Scout Court of Honor where four new Eagle Scouts were recognized. And I presented a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to these four young men, quite extremely well-accomplished young men. It would make any parent proud and, uh, I felt proud and they weren't even my kids. and they weren't even my kids. And also, this last weekend, I attended one of my community's HOA, their annual HOA meeting, and it was a lot of fun. They were excited that I showed up, and they had lots of questions, and I told them a little bit about what's going on in the county. So just wanted to let you all know.
Thank you. Thanks, Suzanne. And Bonnie, did you have any board member report?
Just one report, and that is, I'm going to be holding a virtual meeting, an online meeting for West Placer. It's about water, because there's lots of questions as we have increased development in the area, and we've got concerns about a drought, you know, what are we doing with the water situation? So we will have representatives from PCWA, Placer County Water Agency, the City of Roseville, and others addressing concerns about water, and that will be online Tuesday, October 5th at 5:30 PM. You're welcome to register, and you can register by going to my website, placer.ca.gov/bonniegor, and the information is there for you to click on and get the link to the Zoom Town Hall. So you are all welcome to join us. And for those in the audience, there's a card like this sitting at the table in front. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had one item to report as well. I did meet with Insurance Commissioner Laura. He toured some properties, private residential properties in the Alta community and in Auburn, and we talked quite extensively about his efforts to try to have recognition for fire, from fire insurance companies for the work people are doing on their properties, and to offer more discounts on insurance when people are taking actions to defend their space. So he continues to work on that effort and was able to visit with some of our residents who've done outstanding work to provide defensible space for their properties, but maybe not seeing that kind of effort from our State Department of Transportation along their right-of-way. So especially in the Alta area, where many of you know, we have experienced quite a few truck fires coming down the Interstate 80 grade. So continuing to work on that, very important issue to our constituents. Todd, did you have any report for us today?
I didn't have any additional items.
Okay, well, I did my best to try to keep us on time. Thanks, everyone. We'll get now to our 9:45 item, which is Placer County Visitors Bureau Presentation. And I know you've been waiting patiently back there. Thank you while we took public comment.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. This is for your board's consideration, just an informational item. The Placer County Visitors Bureau is halfway through a two-year contract, and I thought it would be appropriate and timely for Robert Haswell, their CEO, to give you an update. They had an interesting year in terms of marketing our great county, and I thought, what a better time than now to have Rob give you all an update and entertain any questions. With that, Rob Haswell.
The technologically challenged Rob Haswell, see if he can figure the buttons out. Do I just go, Todd, right, left? Okay. I'm delighted to be here. Vice Chair Gustafson, Board of Supervisors, just really delighted to get a chance to speak with you, give you a little bit of information about what we've been trying to do on our part, you know, to help bolster, you know, Placer County's economic recovery, you know, over the past year and a half. And it's been quite a year, as you know, and really happy to do this. I know that Supervisor Jones has, I've not presented with you, so there'll be a little bit of overview about who, you know, what we are and stuff. So I think that'll be great, and we'll go from there. Also, I was reminded earlier by former Supervisor Euler that he's dressed more appropriately to do a Visit Placer presentation than I am, and he's not wrong, actually. Let's see here. There it is. See? Anyway, just real quick, puts, I just want to give you guys a little sense of what our structure is. You know, we're the Placer County Visitors Bureau. We have two charges, really. We're the destination marketing organization for the county, so that's our Visit Placer, and you can find us, visitplacer.com, @VisitPlacer on our social. That's kind of where we do the county marketing. We also run the California Welcome Center in Auburn, which is our storefront, and I'll skip to that bullet. What's interesting about that is we're super proud to be part of the California Welcome Center Network. We're one of only nineteen designated welcome centers, so we get the blue signage that you see when you drive around the state. It's really a nice validator for the work that we're doing. It's great for international visitors, all of it. So real good there. In our, in our marketing work, we have a couple of organizations that we partner with that do a lot of the help. You'll see some of their work today. Faith Mari is a spectacular social media person out of Sacramento, and she does a lot of our organic social. And we have a marketing agency, Abbey Agency, out of Reno, who's really good as well, and you'll see a lot of their work. So that gives you that. So I want to play a quick video, because it's always more interesting than hearing me talk, is to see some cool visuals. This is, this is a video we made for the summer, and it's still running. We think it really fits the vibe that we are trying to go for here at Placer. We, our tagline is "life at its peak," and we really believe that's an easy one to get behind here in Placer. So if Jeremy will play the video. We had to work this out yesterday. Yeah, so there it is. We were playing that, as you can see, across several social media channels. Got about, these stats are not quite updated. We've got probably over 200,000 views ongoing. Again, we're really looking for, you know, starting to promote a vibe out here, what we are, who we are, what it's like to come out and visit us. And, you know, we feel like our response has been really great on that front. So happy to be making those kinds of videos. Have a great board. Just wanted to make sure I shout it out to them. Super, and we got our staff, Marketing Director Tiffany McKenzie's in the room. But if you'll kind of just look down the list, I think you'll see we've, we really try to get a broad spectrum of not just industries and folks, but areas of coverage, you know, folks in Roseville and Lincoln and Auburn, obviously. So really, really, really proud of our board. I think they really all obviously love our county, but they also bring a lot of firepower to our mission. So real happy with that. Some of our key stakeholder organizations that we do work with, obviously, your Economic Development Department is number one, Resort Association, Placer Ground, Vittners, you know, PVT. All of these organizations, we have done work with. We like collaboration. We believe that, you know, collaboration actually is a more effective tool in terms of trying to get a multiplier effect when you're trying to get your work out there in front of folks. So Gold Country Visitor Association is one of the more respected incoming regional organizations in the Visit California world. So again, we're very active in that, in that, in that organization. So you can't talk about the last eighteen months without talking about that giant straight down line you see on that graphic. Tourism is huge, huge industry in California, in United States, and in Placer County. And you can see, dating back from 2010, it's been a billion-dollar industry here in county. In nineteen, 2019, you see we peaked at 1.5 billion. So huge job creator, tax base, all kinds of stuff. 2020, COVID, probably no industry was hit harder nationwide than hospitality and travel, and we're no different. We almost lost half our, our value, $800 million 2020 revenue year, or spending year, I should say, which is obviously devastating. So really important that, you know, what we've been finding out in our industry is it's super important that you actually really actively address this. Like you have to, you can't go too dark, and it's really hard, because when you're, when, as you'll all remember, over the past eighteen months, we've had fits and starts. We've had hopes that things were going to open up, and we'd put, we'd put campaigns together, and we'd start working on them. And then, you know, a wave would hit, and things had to kind of go south, and you had a lot of, you know, you had to keep holding things at different times in our, you know. So you had to be really agile as an organization. And so we felt that we did that really well. We, we put together a travel responsibly and safety video, and a shop local video, which we'll show at the end of the presentation. Two things that we were doing to try to address our folks here on the ground, try to be real active in, in, you know, supporting our business community, and also supporting residents who have concerns. You know, we get a lot of drive, you know, one of the things that Placer County, you know, benefited from during this time is obviously our outdoors access is amongst the best in the state. So a lot of people were coming out here just because it was, you know, one of the few sort of life-affirming things you could do. So we had a lot of drive folks coming in, and there was some concern that folks didn't know how to, you know, really take care of their trash and stuff like that. So, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we had a, you know, a be responsible message moving forward. And despite all that, you know, here's what some of the things that we have managed to do anyway. We, we've had over three million impressions on our stuff that we've put out throughout the last year, 100,000 engagements, engagements is somebody actually, you know, takes an interest in your post, likes it, comments, shares, those kinds of things. Every time one of those things happen, that gets you a broader kind of audience, which we really believe is, is our job, is to really raise the brand recognition of Placer County, because we feel like it's one of the great brands to promote. And counties come with their own, with their own challenges, because people don't know counties, you know, unless you're Napa, basically, right? Otherwise, they know destinations within counties. So our goal is to make a Placer brand become something that's distinguishable from all our neighbors. So you see, we did some paid campaigns, 650,000 impressions there, 50 media placements, including a national placement. We'll see what that was in a second, with over almost 30 million people in readership. So really making strides to get our, our name out there, and, and, and we think it's, we think we've been pretty effective at it. Here's some things we've done over the past year. We revamped our website to make it more accessible, to make it user-friendly, the Find Yourself in Placer campaign. We redid our map. So if you look in the middle of that slide, we have an interactive map on our homepage. And what's really cool about that is we did, we did some, a bunch of video and still work to accent all of our towns. So if you go into our map and click on any one of the communities that is notated, you'll see a sizzle video. So we find that people really do like to see things. If you're going to go to Colfax, and you've never been there, what does it look like, you know? And so we've got some awesome drone footage. You know, I encourage you to look at them, though. It's, it's something that we think is, you know, if we can drive people there while they're trying to decide where they might go, it's going to give them a better, a better feel, a better reason to want to do it. We also employed some folks to do blogging. You know, they have followers. They're called these influencers. You know, there's all these terms. We all know them now. But, but they come in and, and they, and they write about, you know, the great things to do. So we have that whole campaign put together and revamped our newsletter, which is really going to be important, because that's, those are folks that we can directly talk to. They've shown an interest. We can push campaigns. We can push our, you know, shop local to those folks. You know, when you build your list, your email list, it's really, it becomes a fundamental tool that is helpful in, in turning awareness, you know, into bookings and that sort of thing. So I just want to run quickly, and I know we got limited time, but, you know, this was a, an article that Men's Journal did, where the, we got the Hidden Valley, or Hidden Falls run was one of the top fifteen in the nation by Men's Journal. So five, 5.6 million, you know, those, that's where our agency is out working. They're, you know, we're pitching these guys, you know, and, and it's a big get for us, we think. And, you know, again, the broader we kind of get these things going. Visit California, the preeminent and most muscular travel destination agency in the world, has really, really dug in on a lot of our stuff. So we're known as one of the best places to see poppies. This is a story they ran on their blog with their, you know, they've got, you know, I think their social media reached over three million, you know, it's legit. So that's been a relationship that's gotten better because of the work that we've done. It's been particularly Tiffany. Red Cycle, great family, one of the most go-to family blog, you know, onsite websites in the country. You know, they picked up our blog, did a little local open-for-business, Forest Hill, with the local guys. That was fun. So here's some stuff that we've done, where we did some paid. You'll see our branding. We did a co-op with the City of Auburn there on the right. We've done a few of those. You'll see we're really digging in on the "life at its peak" theme, because there's really nowhere in our county that it doesn't apply, as far as we're concerned. So digital ads, you'll see kind of that same idea. This runs across a lot of different mediums. Just wanted to give you guys a flavor of some of the things that, you know, is, are out there on behalf of the county. Some paid ads that we've done. You know, you can see we do videos. We have the scroll, the scroll type. That's where, you know, the language alludes me. Carousel, thank you. So we did a video. Are we, one of the things that we did take advantage of during this time, this time of uncertainty, was we knew we could get more content, because content is king in this world. So did a great, did a really great photo shoot. We went out to wineries. We went to Loomis, down to Roseville, Auburn, Clementine, just really dug in, because we felt like our, our library, when it gets bolstered up, becomes something we can really lean on as we move forward. Some more shots from, from that shoot. You'll see, again, we had a lot of fun with it. You know, one of the things I think you're, hopefully you're getting from the photos is this idea that there are peak moments, and, and we all remember them, right? We all go out, you know, that time you went out, you know, to Tahoe on a beautiful day and saw the sun rising, and you're like, man, does it get any better than this, right? That's kind of what we're digging in on. These are the, some of the videos from our, from our, you know, for our map. They're just pictures that you can see that are all part of that. So super cool, a few videos that we did. Again, just, you know, kind of give you the scope of things. If you haven't been to our Welcome Center, I hope you can come by. It's great. It's right in Central Square. Got a lot of good, got a great goods. We've, you know, our staff really knows how to put you into places that, that'll be fun for you. You know, we get five to 10. It's down a little because of the, you know, the travel restrictions, but, you know, it's just a really good asset for, for the county that we have, you know, the Welcome Center, for sure. Largest distributor, distributor of collateral in the county. So you come in, you need a map of almost anywhere. Plus, we've got them from all over California as well. So had to do the COVID pivot, as we've kept talking about. And I'm just gonna, I kind of want to end on this, because this was a really, a really big, and then I'll have a few, one or two remarks after. But last, it was really important that we, we have this notion of being able to spin and do things in a quick way. So right around Black Friday, right after Thanksgiving, the county went forward with an initiative to shop local. And it was pretty whirlwind, like we kind of all put it together. I know Mayor Gore, when she was mayor, you know, was involved, right? Were you mayor when you, when you did that?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, but you did a thing. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But, you know, there was a lot of intera- was a lot of interaction amongst you. You guys hopefully remember it. We got word on Monday or Tuesday that they wanted us to get involved and try to do a video and wanted to release it by Friday and over Thanksgiving holiday. So, you know, we did it. We're super proud of it. We think it really hit a good note to kick off that campaign, which we think was really, really effective. So Jeremy, can you do your magic? He told me we had these five second delays, so that's why I got to do the stand-up thing. Oh, Jeremy, don't fail me now.
Our local Placer businesses are the backbone of our communities. They give to our charities and sponsor our sports teams. They provide unique products, make up our amazing downtown storefronts and provide jobs for our local residents. They're always there for us. And now, more than ever, we need to be here for them. So this holiday season, please show your love for local and shop Placer. Your neighbors are counting on you.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Jeremy. So we, I mean, obviously, we were super happy with it. We're super proud to even have that opportunity to be a small part of the larger ongoing effort to really move Placer forward in this way. That was, is so important. And I just want to say, like, it's been an honor, you know, for the three years that I've had a chance to run this, to work on behalf of this great county and all the, and all the partners that we have within it. And I really believe Placer County is one of the most well-positioned counties in the entire state to really have a huge, you know, resurgence. We have all the assets. We have the right mentality. And, you know, one, there's an old saying that, it's only old in my industry, but it's, you know, tourism is the first date of economic development. And it really is. So we feel like we can, you know, we have a role, an important role to play as this county emerges as, you know, the number one destination in the entire state of California. So thank you for spending some time. I probably went over, didn't I? Anyway, if you have any questions, happy to take them.
Thanks so much, Rob. Really appreciate both you and Sheri in this presentation. So board members, any questions? Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Excellent presentation. And I, you know, I know, I want to thank you for hanging in there for these last 18 months. We're, we've been hanging in here, almost getting hung sometimes. It's close. But, you know, you took advantage of the, you know, the downturn. You took advantage to do things to make your, your organization shine and absolutely apparent by the program that you just presented. So, and I know you're a longtime Placer County guy. So kudos to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Holmes. Really appreciate that. And I, you know, I know you know more about this area than anyone. So that's high praise. And Supervisor Jones, I know we had talked about getting you, you know, getting a little tour. So hopefully we can get that scheduled back on the books.
And did you have a question?
Yes, I'd love to be invited to tour. You bet. And I just wanted to say it was a great presentation, a nice opener, and I'm sure a good presentation for any people that are new to Placer County as well.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And Rob, thank you very much. Actually, you know, it would be great, would you share with us some of, some of the videos that we might be able to share with our residents? Because I think to Suzanne's point, right, we have a lot of new residents in our community. And, you know, I'm reminded what wonderful assets we have in our community to visit, you know, especially being outdoors.
For sure.
So it'd be great if you could, you know, share some of those with us so we can share those with our, our constituents and our residents.
Absolutely. No, that's, are we happy to do that? Also, I'm going to be, we're going to be attending the Placer Business Alliance trip to DC. And one of the things we're doing is we're expanding on the main summer video to make it a more fully, you know, encaptured Placer County video. So hopefully we'll launch that then. And our plan is to do a lot of outreach over the next year here on the ground. So I'll definitely send you guys the links to all the different videos that we have. And hopefully you'll be able to share them out. That'd be awesome.
Thanks again. And I just, on behalf of all of us, I know we feel the same, that you've done so much to help our small businesses and hospitality industry recover, who were so hard-hit during the pandemic. And so thanks for the efforts to bring them back and support the dollars we've allocated and you've furthered. So great job, Rob. And I know there's nobody who loves Placer more than you, other than maybe Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah.
And all of us.
Yeah, I was going to say, everybody in the room probably, right? You know, we get, you know, just everybody becomes an advocate and that's, that's how you win at the end of the day.
Great.
I just want to thank you for promoting and not forgetting our awesome farmers markets.
Yes.
Oh, my God. And I think on that, on that note, we might hear from some of those folks.
Before we do that, I do need to ask for any public comment on this item. Anything on Zoom? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, Patrick Storm with Lemon Tree Agency, subcontractor for Placer Grown. I know that we're going to be presenting next as well, but I wanted to take this time to say that Rob and his entire team have been our absolute best advocate with Placer Grown. He's a true asset to all of our efforts and incredibly supportive. And I wanted to congratulate him on an incredible time during a very difficult period in our community. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. And so seeing no other public comment, Rob, I just wanted to give thank you and your board for the incredible work.
And thank you so much for having us and all your support of our work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our 10:00 AM timed item, our Agriculture Commission Agricultural Crop Report. Josh, I see you here.
Good morning. And it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Josh Hunsinger. I'm the Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. With me today is Carol Arnold, who is the Executive Director for the Placer Grown Organization. And so first, I'd like to make a few remarks just about what a pleasure it is to be with you today and how fortunate I feel to be part of agriculture right now in Placer County. You know, we've had some tough times recently, right? Right now, we're in a drought. And when I look around the state and I see the struggles that agriculture's in, I feel really fortunate about the amazing water system we have in Placer County. And while it is a serious thing here in Placer County, it could be so much worse. And so really, that, that's something we're keeping an eye on. But at the same time, I feel really blessed about the tremendous water agencies we do have that serve our growers here as well as our public. As far as land use goes, I feel really fortunate about the general plan we have and some of the ordinances we have here in Placer County, which are really starting to, I'd say, come to fruition. Like the winery and brewery ordinance that was passed not too long ago by your board, we're starting to see some really cool new projects come into the county. Looking at that ordinance and saying, hey, there's a real opportunity for me to invest and bring more agriculture into Placer County and bring, bring business here to Placer County. And that's just exciting. You know, we'll, we'll talk about some other areas in addition to the wineries and breweries where agriculture is really growing in the county right now. The support that you have for the ag marketing program as well and, and the continued support for that, Carol's going to talk about that in a minute. But this is the 20-year anniversary of the agricultural marketing program that the, that the county agriculture department has done. And it's gone through a number of different iterations. But throughout that time, the board has really been supportful of, as an economic development tool, as a, as a tool, kind of what I, I tell people is the best way to preserve open space is to keep farmers in business and keep them making money. And then they'll keep farming and they'll keep preserving that open space, keep that land on the tax rolls and keep producing food for our citizens as well. And so I really appreciate your support and I feel really fortunate about being here in Placer County at this time. So moving to the next slide, what's really exciting to report about the 2020 crop report is that it is our highest record crop report ever. And it's the first time we've broken that $90 million barrier. And so there was a variety of reasons why that happened. I'll talk about in a minute. But I do want to put the disclaimer out first that this is not the profitability of agriculture in Placer County. This is just the gross revenues, the gross crop value of what we call the farm gate value or the raw crop value. It's not anything to do with value added. It's not anything to do with profit or net profit or anything like that. It's just the gross value of the ag commodities as, as they left the farm. And so this is the first time that $90 million barrier was breached. It's about $4 million over the 2019 crop report, which was also our now second highest on record. So we've had two record crop reports in a row, which is really exciting. Moving to the next slide, couple things. So I'll highlight the top five crops in that crop report. The first, rice remains our top crop, followed by cattle, and then walnuts, timber, and then almonds. And almonds, this is the first time almonds have ever been in the top five on our crop report. You have to go back decades and decades to even find almonds listed on our crop report in the past. And so that's a real new trend. The nut, the nut trees in Placer County, as I think I've shared with you in past years related to crop report, we've seen about a tenfold increase in nut tree acreage in western Placer County within the last five years. So this has been really explosive growth in that. And those are very high value per acre, kind of dollar per acre crops. And so I think you'll see that trend continuing where both walnuts and almonds will continue to move up that list as, these are very young trees and they're just in early production. We have quite a bit of acreage, which isn't even in production yet. And so I think you'll see those numbers increasing as time goes on. For 2021, I would expect also, I'm, we haven't, you know, obviously closed that season out and run those numbers, but I would say that rice and cattle, with the drought, I would see that those both, I would anticipate they may take a little bit of a hit. We're seeing less rice acreage planted this year as compared to 2020. And then, you know, cattle, I'm, I'm not sure how much of a sell-off we'll see, you know, when there's, when there's a drought, there's not as much feed out there. The feed that is available is more expensive. And so some ranchers may choose to sell off their herds, which may create a temporary bump in, in the amount of cattle value, followed by kind of a decline as we have less, less cows in the, in the county overall. So overall, we also saw some trends in our, our smaller, more direct market crops, the stuff that's sold at a farm stand or a farmer's market or direct to consumers. And so Carol's going to talk a little bit more about that. And so at this point, again, thank you for the opportunity to serve as your agricultural commissioner. It's exciting to be at a time when agriculture is really on an upswing in the county. And I'm going to turn it over to Carol Arnold.
Good morning. Yeah, thank you. So my name's Carol Arnold and I'm the Executive Director of Placer Grown. This is the 20th anniversary of the ag marketing program. And I thought it'd be fun today to, the video has some numbers in it and stuff, but I thought it'd be interesting to take a look at what the support of the Board of Supervisors in the ag marketing program has done. Because it's pretty phenomenal. In June of 2001, the Placer County Board of Supervisors voted to endorse a new concept, the Agricultural Marketing Program. This year, we celebrate the 20th anniversary of the program and would like to say thank you to this board for your continued support of the program and your broad support of agriculture in Placer County. It's not a surprise that although the approach to marketing agriculture has changed in a myriad of ways, the goals have not. The program is dedicated now, as it was in 2001, to raising awareness of the scope and quality of Placer County agriculture and to advocate for our farming community. As I said, the marketing program has evolved over the years. Let's take a look at a few of those changes. In 2001, one of the goals was to develop and publish an ag guide. In 2001, this goal was practical. There were fewer than 10 commercial Mandarin growers and less than 20 commercial farms. Today, with over 80 Mandarin growers in the county, a burgeoning wine industry, and dozens of commercial farms, we would have to publish a small book to list our agricultural operations. Another goal in 2001 was to develop promotional materials and print ads. Rack cards, maps, and ag guides were useful tools in 2001. In 2021, the world has gone digital and paper marketing collateral has been replaced by QR codes and social media. In addition to that, I'd just like to add, because of the funding, we've been able to subcontract with Lemon Tree Agency. And not only do we, does Placer Grown itself have a robust social media presence, but we're kind of working ourselves out of a job. Because one of the things that Patrick's doing very effectively is getting our farmers trained up and they're independent and they're producing their own content. And I don't know if it gets much better than that. Because now we just, it's, it's leveraging marketing and it's a great addition. The other thing is print ads have become prohibitively expensive and they have a steadily decreasing audience. And that's an important thing. I think back in the day in 2001, the marketing program could act as the agent for the farmers because they couldn't afford to each take out an ad. So Placer Grown could take out an ad. Now, nobody's doing it. It, it's, it, it just doesn't work anymore for us, for our industry. So Goal Three in 2001 was to develop contacts with the media. This is still a key goal. We had over 20 live television spots last year. Goal Four in 2001 was to enhance the Placer Grown website. In the ensuing 20 years, the website has been completely revised three times and will undergo its fourth major revision this year. Goal Five and Goal Six kind of go together. They were to develop retail outlets and create demand for local produce at local restaurants and to identify barriers to agricultural endeavors in the county. And that sat with the marketing program, right? That's where those, those goals were put is in that contract. And the thing that's happened over the years is we've discovered that farmers are their own best advocates. It doesn't help to have a middleman in there. It helps for the farmer to develop the relationship with the restaurant and also just the logistics. It's like if I go to a restaurant and say, hey, do you want some turnips? And then I go to the farmer and say, hey, they want your turnips. And they say, when do you want me to deliver them? And it's like, no. That, that doesn't work any, anymore either. And as far as identifying barriers, we have a much better system now. Josh acts as the agent to help the farmers. He's the person who's the most knowledgeable. He knows the county. So all the growers have access to their ag commissioner and they can just say, hey, I'm struggling with something with planning, or I'm struggling with environmental health or whatever it is, and Josh can help. And that, I think that's a much smoother path. So these are a few examples of how the agricultural marketing program has changed over the years and how your support has allowed us to change with the times and help our farmers become more self-sufficient. Having a robust marketing effort has helped agriculture to continue to grow in Placer County. And again, we thank you sincerely for your support of the program and of our farmers, ranchers, vintners, and brewers. And now, now we have a little video to share with you.
All right.
Should have sound.
To bring you another point of view.
There we go.
The COVID pandemic has had a historical impact on society that will be written about for decades to come. These impacts are generally viewed as negative. However, one silver lining was the positive impact on our local agricultural industry. By July of 2020, the initial shock of the pandemic and resulting quarantines had morphed into a more endemic situation. As remote work, distance learning, and stay-at-home orders solidified, many became concerned about the availability and the security of their food supply. Desperate for a source of human interaction and worried, consumers started to rethink their views and the importance of a diverse local food supply. In the midst of all this uncertainty, our farmers kept farming. Considering these new dynamics, the Placer Grown Ag Marketing Program was able to utilize our existing infrastructure and relationships to quickly adapt and implement marketing efforts that accounted for shifts in consumer demand. Although we were unable to support promotional events such as the Farm and Barn Tour, through our website and social media, consumers were able to find local sources of food and safer places to shop, such as our outdoor farmers markets. Here are some examples of our agricultural marketing efforts over the last year. We provided lunches for the Placer Nature Center Summer Camp. With a change in delivery method, our successful in-person crop-to-tabletop dinner With a change in delivery method, our successful in-person crop-to-tabletop dinner became a takeout dinner with Josephine's Restaurant. Despite this change, Placer Grown sold over 100 meals in 24 hours. Seven online cooking demonstrations were recorded in partnership with local chefs to promote seasonal agricultural products. Key growers reported at least a 20% increase in sales. As case studies, Placer Grown monitored four new farms that appear to have reached a point of long-term viability. Placer Grown continues to witness an increase in the number of local farm stands. However, the story for our wineries and breweries was not so positive, as many suffered real financial hardship. Based on restaurant and bar restrictions, our wineries were unable to conduct their normal tasting room activities. Placer Grown responded by utilizing our social media and PR resources to provide much-needed promotion of curbside sales and other activities. Social media and PR remain a cornerstone of our program. We secured over 20 live TV interviews, and social media efforts resulted in almost 1,500,000 organic impressions and a combined 29,171 followers on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Another overlooked but positive result of the chaos of 2020 through 2021 was the increased strength and support by the farming community for the farming community. Farmers were working together to address COVID challenges, and farmers supported one of their own who suffered a devastating fire and showed a renewed interest in working cooperatively. Placer Grown remains committed to the continued effort of fostering this spirit of cooperation in our agricultural community. It's truly an honor to serve Placer County farmers and ranchers, and we look forward to what the new year will bring. Any questions?
Thanks, Carol. Thank you. Great video and great presentation, Josh and Carol. Jim, you had a question or comment?
Well, just a comment. First of all, thank you for the presentation, and it's exciting to see agriculture grow and prosper in Placer County. Later this week, I'll be going down to Monterey for a conference, and I'm taking a basket of, you know, local products to share with people in some of the other counties. And I want to thank you for the fruit crate that you brought for us. And Barry will be mad at me if I don't ask you to go take a look at it before I leave for... And then, in, you know, the 20th year of Placer Grown would never have happened without Joanne Neft. She's the one that planted the seeds, kept watering us, kept prodding us, kept coming to the board, and working with farmers that may not even want to be part of it, but she talked them into... And this is the result of what we've been able to do, and it's just because of her that I've lost weight, actually, because she told me what I needed to eat instead of going to the fast food places. But really, you just have to, she needs to have her own statue on the farmer's market somewhere. So anyhow, I just wanted to point that out. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thumbs up, great job.
Okay. We have a proclamation. I'm going to read, and then we'll ask for a motion, and we'll also take any public comment on this matter. So, in the matter of a proclamation recognizing October 2021 as Celebrate Placer Grown Month in Placer County, whereas Placer County has been farmed to fork since 1849, when its early settlers discovered the agricultural gold that could be produced utilizing the county's rich soils, pure water, and perfect growing climate. And whereas Placer County is experiencing agricultural resurgence as many discover the rich potential that exists here. And whereas Placer County's general plan places high importance on the preservation of agricultural land and the economic viability of agriculture. And whereas 2021 marks the 20th anniversary of the county's Placer Grown Agricultural Marketing Program. And whereas Placer County is home to a growing and thriving farm-based winery and brewery industry. And whereas Placer County's mandarins are celebrated far and wide for their beautiful color and superior flavor. And whereas Placer County's farmers markets and farm stands represent a unique opportunity for our residents to purchase the highest quality, locally grown produce directly from the farmer. And whereas Placer County agriculture is a growing industry with exciting new investments being made on a frequent basis. And whereas the Placer County Board of Supervisors encourages all citizens to support our local farmers and ranchers throughout the designated month and beyond by purchasing locally grown agricultural products. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the above proclamation, hopefully will be duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of Placer, County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held September 28, 2021. So with that, do I have a motion? Thank you. And do we need to do a roll call with a proclamation, or is that...
No, but we do need to take public comment.
Oh, we do need to take public comment! I'm so sorry. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on either of the reports or on our wonderful proclamation?
And we have one.
Okay.
Rob Haswell, 11075 Oakview Terrace, Auburn, also the executive director and CEO of Placer County Visitors, Carol. Just wanted to take a minute here to really reemphasize that partnership, what Patrick said about us earlier. One of the things about the work that Placer Grown is doing is, it's not, it hasn't really just been a real boon for our farming community, but it's really started to evolve our entire culinary experience here. There's been a lot of cooperation. The whole farm-to-tabletop, you know, movement has really become, you know, something that Placer can be super proud of. We're not, you know, Sacramento has self-proclaimed themselves the farm-to-fork capital, but I always say you're getting all the food from Placer and YOLO. But now we're also doing the restaurants, the wineries, you know, all of this stuff. And that's really, I think, due to the work that these folks are doing, and just really want to reiterate how important that is to the quality of life that we all share here. And also want to let Supervisor Holmes, it is worth noting with my history that my great-great-grandfather Frederick Bertschel actually built the Bear Ditch River, Bear River Ditch Company to bring water down to the Loomis Basin in the 1870s. So, yeah, a little history there for me. Anyway, thank you very much. Really, this is a great organization.
Thank you, Rob. Any other public here in the room? Okay, we have one Zoom caller.
We have two now.
Oh, two Zoom callers now.
Cheryl, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, good morning. Congratulations to the ag community. I actually do farm myself. I grow heirloom seeds and believe in producing what I eat as much as possible. A couple of quick comments I had were on the crops such as almonds, which are heavy-water producers. I would ask the commissioner if maybe he could consider looking at other alternatives. I think there are other ways to do that. Farm-to-table, I think, is very big, as is culinary. I congratulate the county for doing that. My concern, one of my concerns has been with the, I'll call it Disney-esque, treatment of wineries and breweries. I think everyone loves wineries and breweries, but along with that comes the vehicle miles traveled, the noise, and it's not the wineries and breweries, it's the event centers. And so I'm hoping that the commissioner can work closer with the community to understand where these issues are, because I think that the community as a whole really supports wineries and breweries. But we are in the top 10 in the Sacramento and Roosevelt area for poor air quality in the United States. And so thinking about how you can grow along with managing that aspect would be great. And again, congratulations on your 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And the next caller?
Kathleen, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I want to speak in favor of this proclamation, but I also want to urge the county to look very carefully at planning, and the planning commission and development issues in the county, which are encroaching all the time on our agricultural and open space. And I think the county has not done as good a job as it could do to protect the agricultural interests and the open space interests in our area. So please keep that in mind. I do appreciate all the work that's being done by Placer Grown, and I think that this is an important aspect for us to add to our diverse economic base, not just tourism, but agricultural and other small businesses. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And I don't know if either one of you wanted to respond to any questions from the public that were... You came up to the mic, so I didn't know...
Oh, no, I was just trying to listen carefully to what you were saying.
Okay, great, great.
Placer Grown, just, you know, as part of our 501(c)(3), we do not get involved in anything political. We can't. And so space use and all that, that belongs somewhere else, not with us.
Great.
That's all I can say about that.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we have a motion and a second on this proclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, we'll present. Thank you so much for your reports today, and I think we want to get a picture. And I'm going to stand in for Rob. Do you want all of us up there, or...
Oh, go ahead, do it.
Okay.
I'm going to stand in for Robert here.
Okay.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I should take my glasses off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Great. We'll move on now to our item three on our agenda. Gosh, we're only to number three? This is Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, Property 1B, Specific Plan Amendment Development Agreement Amendment.
Well, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. This morning, I am requesting that this item be continued to the October 12 agenda, to a time that I would work out with Clerk of the Board Megan Wood.
Chair, we would request that the item be moved to October 12 at 9:00 a.m. or as soon thereafter as possible.
9:00 a.m. or soon thereafter, depending on public comment that day, right? Good.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, but I think we need a...
I'll move that we do the requested action.
Thank you both. And Supervisor Jones is temporarily out, so I'll just do a roll call for this then? And just, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That catches us up a little bit on time, making me look a little better. Then we'll move on to our 10:45 timed item, number four, County Executive. This is the Capital Facilities Impact Fee Annual Report and Consumer Price Index Adjustment.
Yes, good afternoon. Hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Vanessa Lieberman, and I'm the Management Analyst in your CEO's office. The item before you today is to adopt a resolution to accept the Placer County Capital Facilities Impact Fee Annual Report and make findings as required by Government Code 66,000, and to make the annual fee adjustment as required by county code. The Capital Facilities Impact Fee Annual Report is required by county code to identify the amount of fees collected and used for capital projects needed to serve new development, and includes findings required by Government Code 66,000. The total amount of fees collected for fiscal year 2020, 2021 was 8.2 million. The beginning balance as of July 1, 2020, was 19.9 million. After the final coroner payment of 3.5 million and other contributions, our ending balance is 21.2 million as of June 30, 2021. Also included in the annual report is an updated fee schedule adjusted by Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. The time period utilized was from June 2020 through June of 2021, and the fee increase for this year is 4.428%. The updated fee will go into effect 60 days after your board's approval of the annual report and the updated fee schedule. The Capital Facilities Impact Fee Annual Report was made available to the public 15 days prior to today's board meeting for review, and all outreach was done with our city partners and the BIA. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Do we have any questions? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Chair, I see none.
Not seeing any public comment. Sorry, Suzanne, did you have any questions on the facilities fee? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hi, Carrie. We're on to Agricultural Commission Use of Funds and Reimbursement Agreement with Placer County Water Agency. Carrie Timmer is presenting this.
Good morning, Vice Chair Gustafson, and members of the board. Carrie Timmer here, the Regional Forest Health Coordinator, with what I hope will be a fairly simple request of your board, and that is, in essence, to allow me to spend $1 million of somebody else's money. This funding would be used to continue wildfire fuel reduction and forest health work on the French Meadows Restoration Project. So to give you just a brief bit of background, our partner, the Placer County Water Agency, or PCWA, was recently awarded $1 million from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy as part of a competitive, early-action forest resilience funding distribution that took place earlier this summer. The award is intended to cover work to reduce tree density and fuels on almost 500 acres in the upper watershed areas that are feeding French Meadows Reservoir and our Middle Fork Power System. The county currently holds a master stewardship agreement with the U.S. Forest Service, which allows us to oversee the program of work in the field for this joint project that we have with the county, the water agency, and a number of other partners. And as a result, Placer County Water Agency, the recipient of this new funding, has requested that we, the county, manage the work that will be conducted under this grant as well. So the proposed Use of Funds and Reimbursement Agreement before you today would codify that relationship, which would allow the county to handle procurement, contract management, invoicing, vendor payments, and reporting for the grant, implementation of the work on the ground across the almost 500 acres included in this project, and then coordination between the partners and the key agencies involved. And these are all services that we are currently providing for other funding sources and partners. And the county would then be reimbursed by Placer County Water Agency for the expenses that are incurred on behalf of the project, using the grant funding that is coming from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. So the Use of Funds and Reimbursement Agreement would start immediately upon approval of your board, review as to form by county council, and signature by the ag commissioner Seeler. This agreement would continue through December 31 of 2024, or the completion of the project work, whichever comes first. We are definitely hoping that the work would be completed well in advance of that date. We're hoping by the end of next year, 2022, but that will depend largely on weather conditions and fire conditions and things that often have restrictions in terms of how much work can get accomplished in the season. The actual cost of the anticipated work is roughly $2 million in total. So the remaining funding, plus, you might notice this clause in the grant agreement, if the Sierra Nevada Conservancy were to deny payment of any certain expenses that Placer County would be invoicing, sorry, Placer County Water Agency would be invoicing them for, then the funds that are currently involved in the French Meadows project outside of this grant funding would be used to make up that difference, both for the remaining project work, as well as, again, any of these costs, for whatever reason, might be denied by the ultimate funder. To move this work forward, then, staff recommends that your board first approve and authorize forward, then, staff recommends that your board first approve and authorize the Ad Commissioner Sealer to execute this $1 million Use of Funds and Reimbursement Agreement with our partner, Placer County Water Agency. And that would be the vehicle to establish the relationship that will allow the county office of the Ad Commissioner Sealer to manage implementation of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy grant activities on behalf of Placer County Water Agency, under the county's U.S. Forest Service Master Stewardship Agreement. And then, secondly, to approve a Fiscal Year 2122 Budget Amendment, number 00553, for community and agency support to allow for the payments that will then be reimbursed to the county from Placer County Water Agency, meaning that ultimately there is no net fiscal impact to the county. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry? Yes, Bonnie first, then Jim.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it. And, you know, there's been so much work done in that area to protect the reservoir, to protect the watershed. It's been a terrific effort. How much more, like, how many more acres do we anticipate still need to be addressed to keep that area safe?
So based on the original proposal design, we have roughly 5,600 acres remaining to be treated overall. We intend, we hope, to have about 1,000 of those acres treated by the end of this field season, so that would leave us with about 4,600 acres.
And how much have we done up to this point?
We have done, unfortunately, less than we would have liked. We were planning or hoping originally to be able to treat roughly 3,000 acres per season, and so far, we've treated about 3,000 acres over two and a half seasons.
Okay.
This year, just as an example, this gets into some detailed planning and processing by the U.S. Forest Service, but historically speaking, say for the month of June, there might have been two or three days where our vendors were not allowed to work. This year, it's been more like 16.
Because of the weather?
Because of the weather conditions and the extreme fire danger. And part of that is because the firefighting capacity is being used elsewhere, and therefore would not be available should there be a start, a fire start, as a result of this work, or really anywhere in the forest. And as you might recall, the nine national forests were shut down for a period of time, and that was for this very reason, is that they did not have the firefighting capacity on hand to be able to deal with something if it were to start.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Certainly.
Great. Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. Who's going to be managing the use of these funds?
Me.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yes, me, with great support from my boss, Josh, whom you just heard from, and all of the partners. But yes, that will fall under my-
All right. I'm going to move that we do this, because we got to keep moving, especially if we ever get any snow. We want to get as much work done.
I am so conflicted. I hate this position I'm in, where I so badly want snow, and yet I'm so desperately afraid of getting snow.
I know.
I think I heard a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, then we need to go to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this item? Not seen any. So we have a motion and a second, and I think the second part requires a roll call, but not this? One motion with the roll call? Okay, so you've moved approval on both item one and two, the agreement and the budget amendment, and we'll do roll call. Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. And I guess my rough calc is we need about 16 million more to finish up the scope of work, and I- Yeah, keep working on it. Thank you. Great. We'll move on then to item six, our Facilities Management Building 301 Improvements Project. Hope, is she here with us? She's on Zoom.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. My name is Hope Bostick, and I'm an architect with Facilities Management Capital Improvements Division. And I'm here today to make two requests associated with the improvements to building 301 at the Placer County Government Center for the Agricultural Department Weights and Measures Division. So again, this is part of Josh's work. So first, I'd like to request authorization for the Director of Facilities Management to execute a job order authorization for $295,270 with Mesa Energy Systems, which will exceed the $250,000 individual job order limit under the Job Order Contract Agreement. And this would be for building 301 improvements for project for the Agricultural Weights and Measures Division, and to authorize needed change orders not to exceed $27,264, consistent with the County Purchasing Manual and the Public Contract Code. Secondly, I would like to request that you authorize the Procurement Manager to amend the Job Order Contract, or JOC, Contract Number SCN102955 with Mesa Energy Systems, which will exceed the JOC aggregate limit of $1 million by $400,000. This will allow for the construction of the building 301 improvements as part of Mesa's work, as well as other pending work anticipated to be completed by Mesa Energy Systems, Inc., during the current contract period, which is about to expire. But all of this work has already been occurred, and we've already gotten proposals for this work from Mesa. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Not seen any, any public comment on this item. We're not seeing any public comment. Hands raised, so we'll entertain a motion. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, Hope.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Health and Human Services, item, a number of items that Amy and then Dr. Oldham will be talking about. First, item A.
Good morning, Vice Chair Gustafson and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care, here with five action items for your board's consideration. First, to approve an amendment to contract with Roseville Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites, Roseville of San Francisco, San Francisco, California, for emergency lodging services for a maximum increase of $754,929, for a new maximum amount of $4,42,570 through December 31, 2021, to extend the term and increase capacity as needed for increased COVID-19 risks subject to available funding. Second, to approve an option to extend the contract with Roseville Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites, Roseville of San Francisco, California, on an as-needed basis through March 31, 2022, for a maximum increase of $754,929, for a new maximum amount of $4,797,499, subject to available funding. Third, to approve an extension to a contract with Yanni King of California, Inc., of Sacramento, California, for cleaning services at the Hampton Inn and Suites through December 31, 2021. Fourth, to approve an option to extend the contract with Yanni King of California Incorporated, of Sacramento, California, for cleaning services at the Hampton Inn and Suites through March 31, 2022. And fifth, to authorize the purchasing manager to sign all required documents. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, counties were asked to find and provide non-congregate sheltering for residents of Placer County who became COVID-positive, exposed, or who are at higher risk of complications if they were to contract COVID-19. The use of hotel facilities for housing these persons provides this separation in a safe and secure environment, which is essential to prevent or slow the spread of the virus throughout the community. The only hotel in the Roseville area that was willing to work with the county for these lodging services is Hampton Inn and Suites in Roseville. We have been operating Project Room Key here since spring of 2020. As we continue to see COVID-19 cases in Placer County, including with this at-risk population, it is necessary to continue utilizing the Hampton Inn to keep individuals isolated. Therefore, it's necessary to extend the agreement through December 31, 2021. The agreement for cleaning services will also need to be extended accordingly. In the event of additional services are needed beyond December 31, the lodging and cleaning services may be extended on a month-to-month basis as needed through March 31, 2022. Both of the agreements include options to cancel with 30 days' notice. County staff will closely monitor the needs for these services and reduce the contracts with them as necessary. While utilization varies week to week, we have seen high utilization of this service over the last two months. Last week, we only had one room available. Intakes for this program occur every weekday. Seventy-six individuals have been housed, have been housed, permanently housed, or placed into housing at exit from the program. The total cost of this increase is related to COVID-19 homeless mitigation and is expected to be covered by Project Room Key, FEMA Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Grant, and an existing allocation of General Fund in lieu of CARES Act funding. Any funds to be reimbursed by FEMA, any funds to be reimbursed by FEMA will need to be advanced from the County General Fund. If funding does not become available from FEMA, then County General Funds will not be reimbursed. Happy to answer any questions on this item.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy? Bonnie?
Yes, thank you, Amy. I do have a question. And since we've been at this for a year, I'm guessing that the funding strategy has been the same, right? And have we been reimbursed completely from the state? Have we had to take general fund dollars for this item to this point?
Yeah, no. To this point, we have not had to take general fund items. We have had some challenges, to be honest, about the FEMA dollars and reimbursements, but luckily we have had other coronavirus-related funding that I mentioned that's been able to cover the costs up to this point. Moving forward, that might not be available, and we would have to reconsider continuing at that point and ask, seek board's approval to continue if we run out of funding.
Great, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I was just curious. This seems kind of pricey. It runs about, the $754,000 through December 31 is about $251,000 a month, right? And how many people did you say that it?
It serves roughly at any given time. We didn't have every single room utilized until this iteration of the contract, so it was roughly around 65 to 68 people at any given time. But this new extension actually is going, that's why it's an additional funding. It's going to give us ability to use all 85 rooms, which we do believe that need exists to fill it. So at the capacity we had prior, we were utilizing it with about one to three vacancies. And we have to always have some vacancy for cleaning and sterilization between admits, but it's fully utilized at that level. And so, this iteration will give us 85 rooms.
How do you determine who's going to be housed there?
It's determined based, they have to be Placer County residents, they have to be homeless, people without access to non-congregate living situations, and then they have to either have COVID, have been known to be exposed to somebody with COVID, or have medical conditions that would make them a higher risk if they were to contract COVID-19, to land in the hospital. So we take a lot of referrals from hospital discharges, from other facilities that offer services that those individuals ended up COVID-positive, and there's nowhere else to put them. And so, we take them from, and we have self-referrals as well.
Okay. And do you have a, how's the transition? How long does, do they typically stay?
So their length of stay are a maximum of 21 days, because it's meant to be short-term, you know, isolative. They can be readmitted after that 21-day period, but there's usually a week in between before readmittance is considered, and it depends on if they meet that criteria because of a medical condition that would make them eligible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I'm going to follow up on your question. So it looks like, based on the calculations, it's about an average daily rate that we are paying to the hotel for the services?
Yeah. So because when we first made this agreement, we had a reduced rate and didn't need to pay for all of the rooms, because hotels weren't doing well at the time. It was in the middle of COVID-19 pandemic. But our relationship with the hotel owner has required us to increase our rates, because if he were to let this agreement with us go, he could more fully utilize his hotel for hospitality and through other means. And so, this new one is going to have us be paying the $85 rate per room, which is still a reduced rate, but, you know, every, all 85 rooms at $85 per night.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Jacqueline from Newcastle. So I have, I'm a little bit concerned about this, obviously, taking more money out of our budget to spend on this when we have our sheriff's department that, you know, we're being, reducing their compensation. But are there any other resources, any other buildings that wouldn't cost, I mean, $85 per night just for the hotel? I don't even know what the cleaning, she didn't, you know, let us know what the cleaning cost was for that, because that's in addition to the additional 740-whatever thousand dollars it was. So are there any other resources in Placer County where these homeless COVID-positive, now COVID-positive, obviously is a completely different story. How are they identifying? Is it just a PCR test? Do they have any symptoms? Are they struggling to breathe? You know, all of that. So are there any other resources in Placer County where they can be housed? You know, that's not a large number of people for that, you know, exorbitant amount of money. Seems like there would be some other place that wouldn't cost so much to house the people. And then what is the additional budget amount for the sanitation services?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Catherine McBride, and this is my friend Becky. We're both Placer County residents. Well, first, I wanted to say I'm opposed to voting on this Agenda VII, as it applies to Project Room Key, which is tied to FEMA camps. I urge you to look further into this matter prior to voting on spending millions on hotels and cleaning to provide for the homeless in an attempt to force social distancing as it relates to COVID-19. All of this spending is assuming there's proof that the homeless are at severe risk for contracting COVID, and that social distancing and quarantine those that aren't ill will spread, prevent the spread. There are so many schools of thought on this issue, and it's not prudent to assume that the narrative being told is the actual truth. Okay. First, I don't believe the homeless really want these hotel rooms. This is my personal experience. My son was homeless in Davis and never got COVID. His homeless friends did not want to go to these hotels, being provided mainly because of the curfews, and I feel that homeless people are human beings and they deserve dignity and freedom. I don't believe they're at a high risk for COVID. There are studies showing, are there studies showing the rates of death from COVID in the homeless? From what I've heard, they are testing the people at the shelters, and those who are testing positive aren't even sick, or if they are, it's mild. So they're putting, and also, they're putting the positive-negative tested people together. So even if the tests are accurate, they're not being treated or quarantined correctly. By now, I bet the majority of the homeless populations already had COVID or fought it off with their own immune systems, as I did in February of 2020. Okay. Also, those who are sick with COVID deserve to have access to early treatment, such as hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin, that have been proven to be safe and effective. This would be better use of the allocated COVID monies. Let's see. Okay. Currently, we're looking at COVID variants such as Delta. How do we know? Oh, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I was in this shelter here in Auburn. The people being tested for COVID, I don't know if those tests are even correct, because they seem to be healthy if they're coming back as positive. I don't know anybody in there that's been deathly ill, and they're being sent to the hotels, and they're telling me, but I didn't get sick. So I don't know. I just know of three people that were sick, but it was very mild. So I don't think it's worth sending them. So I don't think it's worth sending them to the hotels when they could get this medication. I know my doctor will not give it to me. He wants me to get the the vax, and I will not do it. The people in there that were vaxxed, they're now getting it, and they're spreading. So I'm confused too on this. I'm torn.
So we ask that you continue this item until the next meeting to get more information because there's too many questions.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Wendy Beal again. I would have to agree with the our my fellow Placer County residents that just spoke. This is a lot of money, and I would love to see in more of a constructive way how this money is being appropriated for this for this particular for the homeless. And also, opposed to this being voted on today, I think that there needs to be a lot more research agreed that I would love to see and with Dr. Oldham on the line, would really love to know how he can help these people in a way. Let's get this money and start giving these people therapeutics if that's what can help them. Putting them in a hotel isn't going to help them if they have COVID. If they are elderly and they are more of a high risk, we need to get them therapeutics. We are unnecessarily letting these people suffer. We are unnecessarily letting these people die. And so I would like to see more information as to the breakdown of the cleaning, all of the things. I worked in hospitality industry for years, fifteen years. Eighty-five dollars a night per room, that may not seem like a lot, but it is for this area. And it's just concerning that these funds are, you know, four million dollars, it's a lot of money, and would love to see, you know, maybe this can get continued, and there can be more of a comprehensive, detailed spreadsheet of where this money is going. Also, the money that's been spent, would love to see where the money has been spent, how that's been spread out. Would also like to know how, again, how and who is taking these individuals and looking at them and saying, you get to go, you don't get to go. Who's doing that? Where is that coming from? Just too many questions and too much information that is not being shared today. So as a citizen, I oppose this being voted on today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Eldar Vigan. So Cal Works is already providing, you know, support for housing. You say you have to be a Placer County resident. Well, how do you know that if they're homeless? And also, I'm sure we can see all over that our, I mean, our country is looking like a third-world country, basically, and this is just going to make it worse. The money I saw was eight billion from FEMA going to Project Room Key, which I'm pretty sure you could put filtration systems, and it's supposed to kill all those viruses. Why don't we just implement more money into things that are more strategic instead of trying to make our country go down into a third-world country as we have been doing? Our money should be allocated and should be distributed properly and invested into things that are going to make this work out better for everybody instead of making it worse and isolating them for fourteen days, twenty days. However, this is our tax dollars. I don't understand why this is even something we're even talking about. It should just not happen. I don't even know what else to say. I needed to do more of my homework on this, but it's obvious that this is not a good idea. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer, resident of Placer County. I would be really curious to know what comparables we have on different buildings in the area to know why we've chosen this specific location to see if we could do this more cost-effectively. I'd also like to know what or how the individuals are being treated, if they are being forced to stay and or forced to go if they don't have the ability to choose. I'd like to know what their rights are in this program as well. I've been really following what's happening all around the world and seeing how people's rights are being taken away by the government choosing where you go to stay. So I would really like to know that they're being treated as sovereign individuals with the right to choose to go there or have a different plan if they choose to go. Also, again, just the financial aspect of this, I I can't say a hundred percent, but a lot of times when there's government contracts, places will charge more because they feel like they can. So I really do think it is important to look at how we're being charged, because I know you guys are very conscientious about where our money is going. I know that's a really big, important point for you guys, which I really appreciate. I do think they should be treated with utmost dignity and respect and given the best place to go. And so I just want to make sure that that research has been done before we decide to approve a lot of money. If it is, then so be it. That's the way we should do it. But I don't know if that has been presented to the board and and been looked at thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. And then we have two callers on Zoom that want to speak with us.
Hello, Yvette Horn, as stated earlier. Just a few quick comments. I'm concerned about the data based on the PCR test. The PCR test was announced by the CDC July twenty-first of this year to all the laboratories that it's flawed because it cannot tell the difference between the common cold, the flu, or COVID-nineteen. So the current PCR test that we're using to determine all these cases, if it's flawed, it can't tell the difference, how do we know that the numbers are accurate? The testing is going to continue to be used through the end of this year, and then new testing is going to be rolled out January first. So flawed testing not only affects this issue, but it affects issues throughout the whole entire state and the country, including kids in school. I'd like to know from Dr. Oldham, you know, if he could comment on the PCR test and whether it's accurate or not. And where's the twenty-one-day quarantining coming from? Because it's my understanding, and I could be mistaken, but I thought it was fourteen days for quarantining, so I'd like to know where that number's coming from. As a citizen, citizen, I'm opposed because it seems like an extraordinary amount of money if it's based off of potentially flawed testing, and I just think we need more data. We need more information. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our Zoom callers now. Michael, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yeah, hi. I'm opposed to this, this COVID. All the all the data that the health officers and the government is pushing on COVID is fraudulent. There's there's therapeutics that easily treat COVID, ivermectin, hydrochloroquine, for example, and that's that's and and we also know that pharmaceuticals are refusing to refill certain hydrochloroquine prescriptions. It's a lot of money, quarantine for twenty-one days. It just looks like they're using taxpayers' money to quarantine these homeless people to make it look like COVID is more deadly than it really is when it when it's easily treatable. Thank you.
No further commenters. Okay, we dropped one there. Okay, Amy, do you want to come back up? There might be a couple of questions you want to address or clarify from the public?
Sure, I I wrote down a few of them that I could comment on, and then if there's any others you want me to address, let me know. But the twenty-one-day rule, so so that one is a good point. I think that not only is it for isolation and quarantine you're going to find in the next item that we're also tasked to try to work with these individuals, provide short-term case management and linkage to other housing opportunities. So the twenty-one days allows us to work with those individuals. It's a maximum, too. Not all of them stay that period of time, but we also try to work with them on exit strategy so we're not exiting them back into the streets and back into homelessness. So.
So a follow-up on that. Have you been able to do that with a number of folks who have been housed there?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, that was loud. Yeah, we have successfully been able to, sorry, I have that data right here. We have been able to house seventy-six individuals who of thirty-three hundred and eighty-five total who have exited. So the others, we're continuing to work with and case manage, and some of them might re-enter, and then we continue to try. And then in the next item, you're going to see some additional resources we're going to be able to have at our disposal in order to increase that percentage.
Great.
Another question about the rights to leave and whether it's voluntary. It absolutely is a voluntary program. We encourage them to stay and educate, provide a lot of education about, you know, risk and, you know, if they choose to leave, we send them out with, you know, masks and other strategies and tools to try to, again, mitigate that risk of spread throughout the community, but we do not force them to stay. And then somebody else asked about how are we not just exposing everyone if we're mixing COVID-positive? So we don't. We have one of the floors is only for COVID-positive and exposed, and we have very strict protocols about how to do the cleaning and the separation of any staff and how they do PPE and all of that. It's very, very regimented to not have anyone else exposed to a COVID individual, and the rest are on different floors of the hotel. Those were the main ones I captured. Is there any others that you'd like me to address?
Yeah, someone mentioned other buildings, other resources to house these folks.
Oh, yes, thank you. We did. And I mean, I think some of you are aware of the exhaustive search that we made in order to find a hotel partner that would be willing to work with us. And in fact, even when the numbers lowered over the summer, we looked again for smaller options for, you know, for different facilities. It's very this was the only hotel willing to work with us for this purpose, which is why and the owner actually has been very reasonable in working with us around rates. We do pay for the the cleaning service. We can provide a breakdown of those costs at a future date if you guys are would like that, and we do provide food for for those who are in the isolation and quarantine, which is is part of the overall costs, and we track all of those costs and our revenues received. So I'm happy to provide anything to the board that you guys need on that in the future.
Great. Thank you. And I see a hand raised. Public comments over, but if you have questions, you can email, you can email them, and we will provide responses to those because we're done with public comment at this point. Suzanne, did you have any questions?
I do. I'm just wondering, you said that they come from they're either released, you're the people who move there or that were allowed to go there, they're released from other facilities. Do you mean like hospitals?
Yeah, so if they are ready to be discharged from the hospital, but they haven't finished their quarantine period, or they're still showing COVID-positive, that would be somebody that we would take jail as well. Sometimes it's time for them to be released from jail, but we know they're COVID-positive, so they would work with us to try to find a place for them. Other facilities like SUD residential facilities or other mental health residential facilities, they might ask us to take them temporarily if they're COVID-positive. So we work with a lot of our community partners who are trying to find resources and temporary placements for their client, their known clients who are are struggling in these times.
Are they? I think that you said that.
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Exited, exited.
Exited the program.
Yeah, so more have been served. Let me see if I can find that. So it looks like. You know, I I don't want to say the wrong number, so I but it's it's roughly around, oh, it looks like four hundred and thirty-four. Might but the total number of people, no, no, you know, actually, can I follow back up? I don't want to get the wrong number.
Sure, sure, but but in conjunction with you said those are are released from hospitals or whatever, are they able to continue a medication protocol if they're on one?
Yeah, so they they have to be stable, like we don't provide, we don't have medical professionals on site, although we do work with home health if they can exit them with a home health aide that would come in and provide some assistance while they're there. But and they have to be able to be take their own medications or have a home health aide with them within the facility.
Right. While they're there, are their rooms cleaned daily?
No, they're no, they're they have room checks to ensure that we're not ruining their rooms for the owner, but they do not get daily cleaning. The cleaning is for the turnover between residents to make sure it's deep cleaned and sterilized for the next person.
Okay. And then after one leaves a room and it's cleaned, do you guys go in and inspect it? Does anyone inspect the room for?
Yeah, yes, they are inspected while people are still there, and they are inspected afterwards. We have to ensure that we keep the the rooms in good shape for the owner per our contract with them.
Okay, and can you be more specific about Project Room Key funds for for everyone?
Right, so so Project Room Key is a state program where these funds are provided to every county across California specifically for this purpose. So we would only be able to use these funds in this manner on this particular service. It's not that I would have the opportunity to accept the funds and then do a different strategy. We would need to use it for this specific strategy.
Okay, and how what's the outlook on that money? Do you know, is it still going to keep coming? Or I know you don't have.
Yeah, so it's that's why we do things on a month-to-month and come back so frequently to the board with this particular item because there is some indeterminate, but 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 so far, it's been continuing, and we expect it to continue, especially since case rates continue to be high.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? I think Bonnie had also covered that no general fund dollars, no Placer County direct taxpayer dollars that were in charge over going to this program. It's from the state funding.
Correct.
I just wanted to reemphasize what that is.
And and you know, I I it's it's a lot of money, and I want to share with these residents. I I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate your concerns and the questions you're asking. This is an opportunity for us to take state dollars. The state has allocated this money and allowing us to serve a population that otherwise would not be served. We all know people who've gotten sick from COVID and have been very, very ill, and this is an opportunity to serve those residents that otherwise would be on the streets. It's their choice to come there and get that housing for a temporary period of time. And so I hear your concerns at the same time. We have a a responsibility to help do our part to keep residents safe and healthy where we can do that, and the state's providing the dollars to do so. So with that, I'll go ahead and and move the item.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? Thank you. And we'll move on to item seven B. And again, Amy, you're on the.
Yes, this one is related but different. So good morning, Vice Chair Gustafson and members of the board. Again, I'm Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care, with just one action item for your board's consideration to ratify the director's certification to accept from the California Department of Social Services the Room Key Project and Rehousing Strategy Allocation in its total allocated amount of nine hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars to continue the rehousing efforts for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two for Placer County's Room Key Project. So as you've just heard, in March two thousand and twenty, communities across California began operating locally-driven and state-supported Project Room Key initiatives to provide this emergency non-congregate shelter for people experiencing homelessness for public health-related reasons associated with COVID-nineteen. The California Department of Social Services utilized a fifty-million-dollar state general fund appropriation to provide funds to counties and tribes to secure trailers, motels, and hotels to initiate and operate Project Room Key.
to provide funds to counties and tribes to secure trailers, motels, and hotels to initiate and operate Project Room Key. CDSS allocated an additional $59 million in one-time state general fund in December of 2020 to support continued Project Room Key operations while increasing the focus and resources to transition participants to permanent housing. At any point in time, the project serves up to, like we just discussed, 65 guests, but it will be increasing to closer to 85 guests, single adults and families who are homeless and have one of the CDC medical risk factors that increase their risk for COVID-19. The project also provides COVID-19 positive and COVID-19 exposed individuals room to isolate and quarantine for the duration of the contagious period. Guests work with case managers on applying for permanent housing vouchers, SSI income benefits, mental health services, IHSS services, amongst others. This new allocation will be used for the guests at Project Room Key towards minimizing their barriers to homelessness. Rental payments, deposits, household items, application fees, hiring housing coordinators and case managers. This funding will allow staff to help house an even higher percentage of those who exit the program Room Key and avoid them returning to homelessness. All revenue and associated expenditures from this agreement are provided 100% with federal and state funds with no county match required and will be budgeted appropriately.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, board members? Okay?
I do.
Okay, yes, go ahead Suzanne, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so you mentioned staff.
Yes.
So then, does this also help pay staff costs?
It can.
For?
Yeah, it, it can. So we can, we can hire additional and actually offset any of the staff time that we are using towards these rehousing strategies. So we have been, you know, just focusing our staffing on keeping individuals sheltered. This will allow us to go beyond that and actually try to do some long-term strategies to help them not re-enter homelessness, which, I mean, just, just to point out, is also really useful to our city partners who the project is located in, wanting those individuals to enter homelessness and not back into the streets and to homelessness. So this will help with that and ensure that as many as possible have some resources and help in the staffing support to follow them, to be able to connect them to solutions for homelessness and not go back to the streets.
So do you mean some of this money then goes to city staff?
No, so we'll probably likely, it'll go to some contracted staff and extra help staff that will be employed to work within the project as case managers in the ways mentioned to try to have them find long-term income strategies and places where they could rent and to do first and last month's rent to help get them started.
Okay, so if we're trying to keep them from going back to homelessness, where are we housing them?
That's the big question. Yeah, it's, it's challenging. Our housing coordinators try to develop relationships with landlords and, and help them understand that by helping them engage in services and having case management support, that we can work with landlords to help it be a mutually beneficial arrangement to house our folks. And so we work on those relationships to increase our housing opportunities, but we would love more.
So, but they come from homelessness, correct?
Yes.
So when we move them into a place, we help pay for first and last month's rent? Do these people, they're homeless, do they have an income?
Right, so we're, we're in addition to just first and last, we would be working with them to try to receive any benefits they're eligible, including SSI income if they're eligible, or any other types of social service that they qualify for. The case managers would help link them to that, and then also housing vouchers if they qualify. There's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons a person might be able to get some subsidies towards helping them remain in housing.
Okay, and do we have the manpower to follow up on these people and find out whether, after their first and last month's rent, if they're able to stay or do they succeed? Do they fall back out of the system?
Well, this money will help us build our manpower, but yes, I would say we also try to link them to ongoing case management that they might be eligible for, whether that be mental health services, our whole person care efforts, our homeless liaison team. We have many, many resources that we would try to help them link to for ongoing services and supports.
We probably don't have the, the manpower to actually follow up to find out who's successful and who isn't.
Oh, for each person. We do have some data, we do have some data. I can't answer confidently for every single person. Data is complicated, but I could provide some of our data about our, our success rates.
Sure, I'd be curious if, if you could.
Sure.
One day. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, board members? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Hi.
Hi.
I did have a question on, she mentioned helping the homeless find government sources like SSI and resources for rent help through government funds. But I didn't, I, every week I get a list, actually probably every day from Placer County of all these job opportunities available and people, and I'm a business owner, people needing workers in their businesses. But I don't, I didn't hear any mention of helping the homeless find employment, for one thing. And, and then, again, it just seems like a black hole of, of money being spent for not really any benefit, and it's, you know, my taxpayer dollars, whether it comes from locally, from our local budget, or from the state of California budget, or the federal government budget, it's all my taxpayer dollars. So I'd, I'd like to know if they're actually helping people find employment and being useful citizens rather than all these government sources of funding. And, and also, the other thing is, what about, these are kind of social problems. Typically, those kinds of things are handled by like churches, loaves and fishes, you know, resources like that. Are there no longer any of those kinds of resources available for these people, or are they not reaching out for those resources? Anyway.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Jennifer from Placer County. I guess I'm a little bit confused and maybe I missed something. Are we using COVID dollars to re-home the homeless? Can somebody answer that? Is that what?
Keep making your comments and then we'll ask her to address and clarify.
Okay. I, I, I've worked with people on SSI, SSDI in the past. They're getting around $900 a month if they qualify for that, for room lodging, food, entertainment. Like, that's, that's their budget pretty much. So, one, one of the things I noticed while working with this population, especially if they were mentally ill, sometimes they'd leave their homes and go missing. And I'm just not really sure how that's going to be affected for this program. I, I think there's a great need to help the homeless people in our community, but I, I think it'd be really good to know, as Suzanne pointed out, like with the follow-ups are, because we can put a lot of money forward to get somebody into a house. But if they're not capable of understanding that this is where they live because they're going in and out of a schizophrenic situation or, or things like this, they will leave their home and go back to being homeless out of, for lack of a better word, pure confusion. And so I, if we are going to spend the money to do this, which is a lovely thing to do, I really do think we need to have some sort of follow-up or do less of it with, with the money budgeted for a follow-up to make sure it's successful, so the tax dollars aren't just being kind of thrown out for unsuccessful cases. I really do want to help everybody, but I think we need to kind of look at that aspect as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Derby again. I was trying to do my homework on this one. I, I mean, I, I knew some stuff about this, but it does say the funds are coming also from, oh, sorry, the coronavirus package. Sorry about that, okay. 1.2 billion is derived from the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, 1.45 billion in Home Key funding. Also, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, that's 250 million in state general funds that are going to this. For some reason, on this Home Key website, it has like awards for getting people to join this program. I, I want to know why. That's weird. Is it more incentives to try to push the vaccine down our throat, or what is this really happening? FEMA is what is funding this Home Key grant funds for the homeless. And I think our money can be used a little bit more wisely. I don't know if anybody is familiar with concentration camps, but it sounds like that's where we're heading when I see this kind of stuff, and I don't like it. So I don't know what else to say besides our money can go to something else. I know you're saying it's not taxpayer money, but let's be honest.
No, it affects us.
It affects us.
I said Placer County.
Yeah, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. I know there's a lot we want to clarify, but keep coming. Let's get all the comments in.
Hi, Wendy Beal again. A few things. I don't really feel like the question was clarified in terms of other options. I know, Mr. Holmes, you had mentioned and questioned that again, and, and the answer was there were no other hotels in the area that wanted to work and that there was extensive work on looking for other options. What other options other than hotels? What other, I guess I'm kind of trying to think out of the box, like how can we, if, if truly are, we're wanting to help the homeless, how can we do that in a way that is more, like a longer, more beneficial for them in terms of rehabilitation? I think mental health is a huge issue. I know the homeless population, that, I guess, digging down deeper to the root of what's causing them to be homeless. I understand that this is a COVID relief, but is, and, and if that's how we're getting them in, but then how can we then look at this program in helping them, you know, get jobs and, and all of those things? Help with the mental health, because I think if we're just putting a Band-Aid on a bullet hole, we're not really helping. We're, we're, you know, we're just, it's just, it's not sustainable for them. And I really appreciate Suzanne's comment and just the accountability. I don't know your name, I'm sorry. She had mentioned that she has some data, but who is accountable for this data? I think that's super crucial, like following up with these people. You know, did this work? Are we, are we keeping any data to see, like, is, is this working? Is this going to work in the future? Are we just going to keep throwing money this way? But we don't even know if this program has worked from here. You know, so just those things and my thoughts, and thank you for this time.
Okay, we have one on Zoom. Michael, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Sure. Again, it doesn't seem like the money's being accounted for, and what's, how are we helping the homeless by just giving them a place to stay? We really need to rehabilitate them, and I, I, I believe that churches and, and organizations like loaves and fishes are, are better equipped than the state is to help these people. So in the long run, this isn't really helping the people by just putting them in motels, and it's really our taxpayers' money. So I believe that, that we, the people, should have a say in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Amy, I'll have you come back up. I, I did want to clarify, certainly the funds that the state and federal government put toward these programs are taxpayer funds. It's just, they are dedicated to these funding streams and not at our liberty to move them around, or they directly are funds to dictate how they're shown, done. You know, I think some of this has been a misunderstanding from some of your comments. Certainly, we track and try to find out effective programs. Homelessness is a crisis, an absolute crisis throughout this state, and no one has all the answers. The vast majority of these people have mental health or substance abuse problems. We're trying to help them out of that. Do you want to shed any other light on this? And, and to those of you, you know, with a lot of questions, I appreciate you wanting to understand what we can do. We all need to be part of it. We do work with a tremendous number of faith-based organizations and partners in the community because none of us can deal with this alone. So I'm sorry to go on there, Amy, and then ask you if you want to address any of the other.
Sure, just, yeah, sure, a few of them. So I want to say thank you for talking about employment piece. I think that's really critical. We absolutely work with any individual that is capable of being hired to try to find employment services, and we, we actively work with them on that piece of it. The ones who are deemed eligible for SSI by, by the state are deemed ineligible, like disabled and not able to work. But anyone who is not qualifying for that, then of course we would be working towards employment options for them and re-entry services. And, and the county offers several other programs that we could link to, to continue job development and re-entry skills. I, yes, I'll echo what you already mentioned, that we partner with lots of community-based organizations and churches. This is definite, homelessness is definitely not a county solution, right? I mean, it is something we are engaging all of our partners on to come to the table, to help, to solve, and to work together and to collaborate our resources. The COVID, yes, it is, some of the COVID funding available, I think the, they're trying to take, just, just to clarify, to take advantage of, sometimes it's hard to identify and engage these individuals. So if we can get them into the hotel, we get to know them, we can try, it's an opportunity to engage with them in a new way and try to have a bigger impact. So that is why these additional funds were, were provided to, because they recognize the opportunity of, of more time, more ability to try to connect with them in a new way and provide some additional staffing and, and funding to be able to support that linkage into homes. I agree with you about data. I think because so many people touch them, we have been doing a better job of consolidating our data into a single system that we all are to use. And we can, that's the system I'm speaking of, that we can try to provide you guys some data. But it is difficult to track because they touch many, many parts of our community. Exactly which program was responsible for their success or lack of success. But I do have some data, happy to prevent, that's more general and global. And I think that was, that was it for the questions. I hope that is helpful. I know it's confusing and, and it's a difficult topic and a challenging situation for our community. And HHS is just trying to do their part and their small part in trying to address it.
Thank you, Amy. Suzanne?
Yeah, I just have a couple more things. So this is, do they call it COVID dollars? Is that what they're calling it from the state? I mean, I know it's called Project Room Key.
Yeah, there's specific Project Room Key identified funds out of the total, the total COVID relief package, right? So then out of that, this funding that we're, we're asking can only be used on people who've touched Project Room Key. So it's a specific allocation for those folks that we've become more familiar with through this project to assist them in additional housing services. So this is a set aside money for those, and, and those particular individuals out, out of the total COVID relief package.
Okay, so this one is kind of one step beyond. The last that we just spoke about earlier was to help those who either have COVID or test positive to help them isolate and prevent the spread of COVID. That's what. That's what-
The first part, yes, is it was really about sheltering, non-congregate sheltering and, and keeping them isolated. This one is to provide services and supports towards rehousing.
Okay, so this is kind of the next step?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Um, I just wanted to make it, help to make it clear to everyone specifically what the money was for. Then I know that they've also, you know, addressed the fact that we do need to go beyond and try to solve the problem of homelessness. So I wanted to take this opportunity to let people know that Placer County has assembled what they call the Homelessness Task Force. It includes Placer, some supervisors, as well as some city council members from each of the city councils. And the main purpose of that task force is to get to the root of homelessness and try to come and find solutions to it, permanent solutions to fixing the problem. I know it's easy to say it, it's not going to be so easy to do, but I just want everybody to know that it's actually in the works right now. That group is meeting and I think we also, Todd, have some, could you speak on the, the people that are helping out with that, the experts?
Yeah, so we, you know, obviously this is a, a joint effort between, you know, there's a lot of experts in this arena, from the Gathering and two other, um, service providers actually as a working group to identify areas where we're, and, and I'll be honest, we're doing very well in a lot of certain areas around this. I think as we talked about, we're looking at programs and services that we either can enhance or maybe reduce and revisit some areas. So part of that effort's a working group, um, from a policy standpoint, I think, um, first time we've actually had all our municipal partners sitting at the table talking about this issue that's vitally important to the community, um, and, and our business community as well, so.
And right now it's just a manpower issue. It's all of these people working together. We're not spending any taxpayer money on it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks Suzanne. Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you. A couple, just a couple of comments. Um, the homeless population, when they're out on the street, first of all, the two things that they want, they have to work on is getting something to eat and finding a place to sleep where they're safe. Uh, and they don't have enough time to kind of, they don't have any structure. So they're living on the street day to day. And we put someone in a motel room for 14 days or 21 days, it gives them a chance for some rest, some, uh, nourishment and some time to think and get clarity with somebody helping them along that path. Sometimes it doesn't work. Sometimes they, you know, they, some succeed and we're grateful for that, where there's some that just, it just doesn't work. And time, you try and try. Anyhow, I just wanted to point that out. It's critical to get these people in some shelter so they have some kind of time to get some structure in their life. Uh, the second thing I want to talk about is, um, the churches that we've mentioned. The Gathering Inn, uh, before this COVID came, uh, had 40 churches that they were taking these homeless to every night. Now they're not, they're now down to 12 because people, the church members are afraid that have, the homeless come in who may have COVID, maybe not, but they're, they're worried about it and they're not taking the chance on it. So they've decided not to help the Gathering Inn on these homeless folks. It was a very robust pro, uh, program before COVID. Now, not so much. We have to look at other avenues and this is one of the avenues that we can. Counties are the safety net for public health or public safety. When people fail, they come to the county for services. We try to do the best we can to provide for them. Some people don't want it, some people fail, but there are those that succeed. So I would like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion is second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No.
Thank you.
Item 7C, and this is an ordinance authorizing the county of Placer to join Partnership Health Plan of California Commission. Dr. Oldham is going to present on this.
Great, thanks. Good afternoon, Chair Gusserson and members. Rob Oldham with HHS, here this morning requesting that your board adopt an ordinance introduced on the, at the August 31st meeting, authorizing, uh, Placer County to join the Partnership Health Plan of California Commission. So this is the third and final step in the proposed transition to a county organized health system model. I know your board has heard background on this topic on multiple occasions, uh, this year, but just wanted to briefly summarize the background. So Placer is one of 10 counties in the region who have submitted a letter of intent earlier this year to leave the current regional model of Medi-Cal managed care, a model which was chosen for us by the state, uh, nearly a decade ago, a, a model that has been demonstrated to have poorer outcomes and less access to care for Medi-Cal beneficiaries in multiple studies, including a 2019 state auditor report, uh, requested by Senator Jim Nielsen. Again, these counties, these 10 counties and the doctors and hospitals in our counties did not have a say in this model, uh, did not have a say in the plans selected under that model and did not have a say in the extension of the term of this model from five to 10 years. Uh, the state has finally given our counties an opportunity to have a say, albeit with a very narrow, narrow window. So our choice at, at this point is between staying with the existing regional model and letting the state once again, uh, choose our plans for us, or transitioning to a county organized health system model run by Partnership Health Plan, a Northern California not-for-profit specifically, uh, created to provide Medi-Cal managed care services to the people and providers, um, exclusively in Northern California counties, uh, with local governance, a, a board that's made up of local, uh, providers and patients and leaders. So I think we've been consistent throughout this process in saying that at least for Placer, this recommendation to change models is not really about the plans that we are currently assigned and, and certainly not about the, the health plan staff who've been recently assigned, uh, to work with, with us here in Placer. Uh, Placer has enjoyed, uh, productive working relationships with our plans, uh, especially over the last few years of this contract. So this recommendation comes down to how we can best assure the most local control and the best model, uh, to serve our, uh, Medi-Cal beneficiaries and our medic, medical providers going forward. We continue to think that this is, uh, the best model, uh, with the, uh, county organized health system model under partnership. Uh, I know some alternative models were discussed at the first reading that caused us to delay the second reading, uh, which actually gave us an opportunity to explore, uh, some of those alternatives a little further. Uh, specifically, there was some discussion, um, of Placer potentially teaming up with El Dorado County, who had, uh, recently, uh, requested to join with the Health Plan of San Joaquin, uh, to create a regional, um, health authority, um, that, that might also include some of the smaller, uh, rural counties that do not plan on moving, uh, to the county organized health system model. However, uh, it, El Dorado has appealed its case to the state and it now appears that they have been given approval to transition to a model with, uh, Health Plan of San Joaquin in 2024. Uh, there was also some discussion of Placer getting more of a voice in local governance if we were to stay with the current regional model. Of course, we would welcome such a change. Um, actually, the plans under their current, uh, contract with the state are required to hold, uh, local stakeholder advisory meetings, um, and, uh, those haven't always happened. I know that earlier this year, uh, one of our plans has actually attempted to initiate these, uh, regional stakeholder advisory meetings. Um, and while this is a welcome development, I'll point out that these meetings, uh, remain more informational in, in nature, so it's not really a governance relationship. Uh, we're one of the many counties in the rural north region including in these meetings. Um, and I think the, the cadence of those meetings, uh, I think they're happening, you know, two or three times a year, uh, lasting for, uh, a, a couple of hours is different than what's proposed under the, um, Partnership Health Plan, uh, where the counties, uh, have, you know, frequently, every other, uh, month, meetings for four hours, um, at, at a time that are governed, uh, you know, their votes, um, it, it's actually public meetings under the Brown Act. Uh, so, uh, while we welcome more of a voice in governance under the regional model and we can, uh, do that now, uh, we wish that we, I guess, would have been given such a voice, uh, a little earlier in the contract, uh, and, uh, I guess we, we have to recognize that these recent promises of additional local voice and governance are probably, uh, what we should have been getting all along and, uh, even if, uh, finally realized, uh, still fall short of the level of local control, uh, that we would get under a county organized health system model. So, um, as I acknowledged on the, the first reading, there's still a lot of runway between now and 2024. Uh, we don't have all the details, uh, worked out yet, um, on either of the models, um, but I, I know there's more detail, uh, coming from Partnership Health Plan, especially on the, um, financial sustainability that there's a report due, uh, to DHCS on, on this, uh, later this month. And so we're early on in the process. Um, we continue to have strong relationships with our existing health plans under the, uh, regional model. Uh, we'll continue to have open lines of communications with, with everyone, uh, so if there are any unexpected complications with the transition to a county, uh, organized health system, uh, we will, we'll, uh, keep, keep, uh, lines of communication open and continue to, um, uh, leave, open the possibility of, uh, other, uh, other options if, if necessary in the future. Uh, but this is an opportunity to move, uh, to the county organized health system, uh, that we've been waiting for, uh, for a long time. Uh, we're not sure when we'll have this opportunity again and, uh, we, uh, continue to recommend that we take it while we have the chance. Uh, so with that, happy to answer, uh, any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Oldham. Uh, board members, any questions? Yes?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Oldham. Um, I do have a question. You referred to, um, El Dorado County joining in another, um, plan, so to speak, with the, with the other counties?
Yeah, so they, they had applied, um, earlier in the year to do kind of something that, uh, called a local initiative with, uh, the Health Plan of San Joaquin, another health plan operating in, in, uh, San Joaquin County and some, some other counties in the Central Valley region.
So this is kind of like a third option, right?
Yeah, that, that's not an option that at this point is open to, to Placer, uh, or any of the other counties. That was something that, uh, back when we did the letter of intent, uh, El Dorado and a few other counties, um, opted to, uh, try to go for that model, uh, with, uh, Health Plan of San Joaquin. So, so the, the model that we discussed potentially, I know, um, uh, some of our, uh, representatives from the plans suggested there might be, um, kind of a third way, uh, a way, uh, similar to what ha, you know, Imperial County has, uh, where they're, um, the, there's, uh, two plans, uh, operating and, and one of those, uh, potentially, uh, could be governed under a regional health authority, uh, and that was what was proposed, uh, potentially that Placer and El Dorado might team up, um, and help, help to lead a regional health authority with, uh, other, you know, smaller, uh, county. There's some ru- rural, small rural counties that are, uh, not opting to go to a county organized health system, uh, model. And so that, that was, uh, sort of the, the idea, uh, that, uh, that, that we would, you know, talk about that and we did. We kind of explored that with, with El Dorado and it sounds like at this point, uh, there's really no, no appetite to continue those discussions, but, uh, again, we'll, we'll, um, stay open to, to those in the event that, you know, I think it's unlikely, but if, uh, for whatever reason, uh, the transition to a, uh, county organized health system model is not, not in the cards, uh, for us, the state does not approve that transition or, or something else happens, uh, we'll, uh, continue to look at that model, kind of under the regional model, how can we, uh, get more, uh, local governance?
So if, if we decide to do this today, it goes into effect when?
In 2024. So what would, if, if we decide today, basically, we would be taken out of the procurement the state's about to do, um, and, and so, uh, we would actually, you know, we would select, uh, Partnership Health Plan. If we didn't today, then it would go out for bid, uh, the state will, uh, issue a, a procurement for, like they did last time, and the state will make the selection of the, um, which health plan. So there's actually no, no assurance that our current health plans with whom we do have, uh, strong working relations, uh, there's no assurance that they'll, they'll get the, uh, the bid, you know, for another five to 10 years if they were to go out. But I know there was some, uh, suggestion that maybe we wait and go, you know, go for the regional model that there might be, uh, for another five years. So that would put us, um, until 2029 before we'd have an opportunity to, to do this again if we were to wait, um.
So are we limited in time to make this decision?
Yeah, so that the state has clarified now, but I think at the, the last, uh, time we discussed this, uh, early October, I believe, the, the deadline now, uh, looks like it's , uh, October the 10th in order to pass the, the second reading, in order to be, um, you know, uh, brought into the, the code model. I believe eight of the 10 counties have already done so and I believe Placer and one other county is, uh, has it on the agenda for second reading today.
Okay, so, and what's the difference in, in what's available out there between what we have and going with this, uh, other option that we're looking at today? What, what's the difference in the services and, and, and what patients are eligible to receive?
Yeah, the, the eligibility is similar. So for medic, these are for Medi-Cal, you know, it's a medic, the federal Medicaid program in California is called Medi-Cal. And so, uh, similar eligibility, um, no matter what the model is. This is really about, um, the who manages the care. So, um, in 2013, Placer moved into a managed care model. So under all of these models, uh, you have, uh, an entity, um, who's, who's managing the care and, um, I would say partnership, this is all they do is, uh, Medi-Cal managed care just in Northern California, uh, with, uh, counties, uh, whereas, uh, the other health plans, I think all the ones that likely would be applying if there were another procurement, have lots of different lines of businesses. So Medi-Cal isn't the, the only focus of them and certainly not, uh, Northern California. Um, but all, all of them, you know, all these plans are skilled at manage, managing care. I think they might have somewhat different approaches, but there's a lot of similarities between the two. Um, I think the, the biggest, uh, difference here again is, um, you know, the, uh, I guess that is relevant, that partnership is a not-for-profit, um, and so, you know, they, uh, have been, you know, in, in talking with other counties, do a lot of investment, um, in their, uh, communities, uh, in, in the counties that they serve and the providers, uh, are very hap, seem to be overall very happy with, with partnership. Um, you know, and, and then of course, the, the big differences around, uh, the, the local governance as opposed to, uh, you know, the, uh, e- even with governance sharing with these other plans, um, you know, again, I'll, uh, it's, it's not assured that, uh, the, the promises that are made, uh, we don't know who, who will win, who would win the procurement the state would get to select for us. Um, but also I think most of these, uh, uh, other commercial, uh, plans have headquarters, you know, out of state or, you know, uh, certainly at a distance from, from us. And so it likely wouldn't be the same type of governance where, uh, we would enjoy with, with Partnership Health Plans. I think those are the two main distinctions, um, but, uh, there, there are a lot of similarities. Again, the most, the plans that do this, they're professionals, the staff are, you know, uh, we, we've worked with them very well on things like, uh, whole person care and CalAim and a lot of the, uh, important things that are, uh, that we're, uh, challenges that we have, uh, ahead of us.
Okay, so there were, I think, 10 rural counties that were in the same position as we are using the same, um, I don't know if you call it a provider or the man, the company that manages the services.
Correct, yes. That, we, actually, um, the regional model is a larger number than, than 10, uh, of those who, the counties that were put in the regional model, that 10, uh, counties have chosen, uh, you know, the, issued a letter of intent to leave the regional model and move to the, um, uh, you know, the regional model with, uh, Anthem in California Health and Wellness are the two plans right now, uh, serving, uh, the regional model counties. And, uh, so those, those 10 counties have, um, did, did the letter of intent back in March, uh, and, uh, like I said, eight, eight of those 10 have, uh, already passed the, the second reading of, of the ordinance, uh, to, uh, make the move to partnership.
Right. It makes me wonder why eight out of 10 want to leave the current situation.
I think that's documented in the audit that was done by the Joint Legislative Audit Committee.
Yeah.
Bottom paragraph.
Yeah. So, so, um, but what I'm getting to then, I know Senator Nielsen had ordered an audit. Have there been major problems with the current company, with Anthem?
Yeah, again, I, I think the, the, most of the, the things that were found in the audit, um, were with the model itself. So it wasn't necessarily directed at, uh, you know, Anthem or California Health and Wellness. It's been, you know, the, the problems that the audit found were, one, with the model and two, actually with the state oversight of the model. Um, and, and so, you know, and that was one of the thing, you know, these counties have been talking with each other for a long time about their concerns and wanting to make, uh, you know, have more say, uh, locally, um, in the, in the model, but also, you know, in the, the governance of the actual benefit, um, and, uh, have not been allowed that opportunity up until now. And, you know, this, this conversation I believe started back in 2016. Uh, at that point, it was, uh, the, uh, you know, it was supposed to be a five-year contract and the state extended it again without consulting with, uh, the counties to, to 10 years. And so, yeah, I would say, um, mostly the, the, uh, what was found in the, um, state auditor report and other reports, the California Health and, uh, Healthcare Foundation also did a report with similar findings that, um, you know, the outcomes, so the quality metrics, uh, for, um, patients who are served by the regional model, uh, was not as good as, um, other models such as, uh, the county organized health systems, but also access, uh, was, was not as good. So I think it, it was more of a indictment of, of the model opposed to any individual plan.
Okay. And if we don't go, if we don't move forward with this today, then the other will be put out for an RFP, and the current company Anthem won't necessarily be the winner?
That's correct. Yeah, it'll go out for bid again. And Placer, if we didn't make this move kind of proactively to a county organized health system, this will probably be our last chance to do so. So if we don't do it now, likely we'll be in the regional model again, and we'll be included in that RFP, and the selection will be made for us. I think it's, you know, we will likely, I'm hearing, that counties will be given more of a say, might have an opportunity to provide letters of recommendation and support during that procurement for different health plans. So that's, I guess, remains to be seen. But I'm hearing that maybe this time the counties will have more of a say if we did go that route. But I think the sure thing would be, you know, going to a county organized health system where we know what we're getting.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Jim, you have questions?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Oldham. So you're asking us to authorize a county of Placer to join the Partnership Health Plan of California Commission, and this would allow us to have our county organized health system? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And would that give us more local control over how we move forward with our healthcare?
Yes, I think so. We would have, it's, again, not exactly, the details aren't worked out as far as what our voice would be, but I think certainly Placer County would have a number of votes on the board and would have more control, you know, in the governance of that, the health plan for Medi-Cal beneficiaries.
So having more local control would help us not to have the state of California dictate a plan for us? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if I remember right, Placer County is the second healthiest county in the state? Is it the second or first? I keep forgetting.
Yeah, we bounced around a little bit. Depends on, there's different organizations that do those rankings, but we're doing pretty well.
So if we go ahead with this county organized health system, would that help our reading as far as the second or first healthiest county in the state of California?
Yes, Super Brother Holmes, certainly it could. When we look at, again, in the comparison of COES model, you know, county organized health system model counties versus the regional model, there are a number of quality metrics where those counties in those models and Medi-Cal beneficiaries in those models have better quality of care. And so having better quality of care, particularly, I would say, for Medi-Cal beneficiaries who often are those who get left behind, you know, look at things even like vaccination rates, other important things where we see real health disparities for Medi-Cal beneficiaries. And so I think if we really want to improve the health status of Placer County, a great place to start is actually providing better care to Medi-Cal beneficiaries. I'm not going to say, you know, promise that this change will automatically have an outcome, but I think it's really important that we have that control, given how important it is, you know, Medi-Cal beneficiaries don't have a lot of options. And so I think it's critical that they, we really, they have a voice. And there, so there's also patient representation on the board for a Partnership Health Plan, and that we have really much, much closer control, oversight over the quality of care provided to our Medi-Cal beneficiaries.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't know why we wouldn't do this.
Any other questions?
I'll wait until we hear from...
Okay. My only question, Dr. Oldham, was I know that you work closely, and your department works closely with the current system. And I'm encouraged that the state is now hearing, as we've thought about breaking away to have more local control, the state is saying that maybe they would consider different options that would give us more local control in response. But to date, they have not. And that's what the audit showed. And that is why these other counties and ourselves are considering going this different route where we would have more local control. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
We have two on Zoom.
We have two on Zoom. Anybody here in the audience? Okay, why don't you come up? We've been waiting patiently. Well, morning.
Good morning. My name's Kristy Ward, and I have a child in the district of Placer County. Anyhow, I'm speaking on, I think we should definitely keep local control. I don't have much to say on this exact matter, but I think it's very important for us to keep local control because government is trying to overreach and mess up our constitution. We really need to stay local control. And I appreciate that you guys have done that. Thankful.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have Zoom callers. Jason, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is for Dr. Oldham. This is Jason Wedge. So you mentioned this is a, it's a not-for-profit county healthcare system that gives us more local control. Would this give the providers an opportunity to offer alternative medicines that currently is deemed unsafe or by the state doesn't allow, you know, such as, you know, some of the medicines for, you know, ivermectin and hydrochloroquine? Would this give more local control for the county to dictate whether they choose to use these methods of treatments or not?
Jason, do you have other comments or questions? And I'm going to get through all the public comments.
That's, that's all I have for Dr. Oldham. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next caller. Mike, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mike Prozio with Anthem Blue Cross, Regional Vice President, also a constituent, a resident of Placer County. Not surprisingly, we would ask you to delay this or reject this. I wanted to, A, thank Dr. Oldham as well as all of you. There's been more discussion in Placer County than in other counties on this issue. We still don't think an adequate level of transparency into the process, but we do applaud Placer for doing more than other counties have. A few things that were mentioned, Dr. Oldham mentioned access. Moving to Partnership won't provide more access for Medicaid patients. There are challenges in any rural setting around access. The aforementioned audit focused on issues largely in the far north of California, near Susanville or Enyo and Mono, those counties, not to say we don't have access challenges in Placer, but Anthem already has a robust network, long-term contracts in place with UC Davis, Sutter, Dignity to provide services. So we would challenge and ask the proponents of a move to a COES to identify exactly what additional access they would be providing there. We also think the board should consider the financial impacts of this. I think Dr. Oldham said, you're still waiting on the financial details of this. Currently, in the current model, you hold no financial risk for the Medi-Cal system. That risk is held by Anthem and our competitor plan, California Health and Wellness. When you move to a COES, you do hold some financial risk. Clearly, that has not been clearly outlined yet, and we don't have all those details, but we're moving forward anyways. For the purposes of local control, if you truly want local control, you will not join up with what will ultimately be a 25-county plan in which Partnership, to the earlier point about, you know, eight of the 10 counties, it's 18 counties currently in the rural system. Partnership has cherry picked a handful of the 10 counties they want in because they're the least challenging counties. They didn't ask Enyo to join. They didn't ask other more challenging counties to join because Partnership recognizes the difficulties of doing that. So many counties are staying in the regional. But if you want local control, the Partnership Board has representatives of, at least one or two representatives of all 25 counties. So Placer will have one or two, maybe you'll get three representatives on a 30 to 40-member board. A local initiative, which has been talked about, was an option, but it was never put forward by any of the proponents in all of these rural counties because, as Dr. Oldham said, quote, "We've been waiting for the opportunity to move to a COES." So there was never transparency to the boards of all of these counties of what your options were eight months ago. We could have had conversations about a local initiative in which you would create a Placer County Medicaid Department, Medicaid Agency, in which you would have absolute control in a local initiative. But that was never an option that was put forward in Placer or Butte because I think Dr. Oldham's predecessor and others have been working on this for some time to move away from a competitive marketplace run by private plans to a government-run marketplace in the Medicaid system. That's what this is about. This is about eliminating competition, eliminating choice for Medicaid members. Right now, Medicaid members in Placer County get a choice. You're taking away their choice. They would be the only market segment not given some choice of health plans. Businesses get to choose, CoverCalifornia gets to choose, Medicaid currently gets to choose, but you would be eliminating choice for that. You would be saying that we, the government knows better what, how you can pick your Medicaid services. The government knows better than the individual. We think choice should be maintained. We think the LI is an option. As Dr. Oldham said, you know, maybe we have to go through one more procurement. Or the state has also said, while they do have an October 10th deadline, they would be willing on a case-by-case basis to consider pushing that deadline out or listening to appeals from counties beyond that deadline. So we think this is a decision that's being made with only portions of the information. It's not giving you the local control you want. And instead, it's really much more focused on an agenda to move private sector health plans out of the system in favor of government-run plans. And we think long-term, that's not in the best interest of the county or the state. So we would ask you to reject the proposal or at least postpone action until we can get further clarification from the state as to options. Thanks.
Chair, we have one more. Michael, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yeah, I agree. There's just isn't enough information. I really couldn't follow Dr. Oldham's presentation. I really didn't understand what we're currently under, what's the benefit of this, what other options do we have? And the last caller, I believe his name was Mike, presented a lot more details that we clearly don't have the information that we need to make this decision. Thank you.
No more public comment. Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Oldham, did you want to address any of the questions or comments?
Yeah, Mike, and I don't think I've met Mike before, so glad to hear he's a Placer resident. But, you know, talked more with other staff from Anthem over the years. But brought up a number of points, and I won't respond to all of them, but around the financial risk, which I think is an important one, and it's sort of alluded to previously, but I think brought up more directly. We've asked around, at least the folks who are advising us, and so tell us that there really is no financial risk to counties under a county organized health system model, as was described before. So that's probably the most important thing and was compelling when that was brought up at the first reading. And so we've asked around, and that doesn't actually seem to be the case. And so, but, you know, some of the others around choice, I think we've addressed that before, that really, you know, right now, it's not like Medi-Cal beneficiaries really have a choice. Most of the choice is around providers. And so having access to, especially specialty providers, we've had beneficiaries having to travel really long distances for even common specialty, you know, care like obstetrics, gynecology, dermatology, et cetera. So, yeah, there are no guarantees, but definitely we hear from other very rural partnership counties where access can be a real challenge. But the Partnership has done an excellent job in trying to create as much choice as possible for beneficiaries. Even in those environments, then I think they're really excited about Placer County because we do have more providers, many of them that are not contracted with Medi-Cal right now. Some of our largest providers don't have contracts, especially for primary care in Placer County with Medi-Cal, with our Medi-Cal plans right now. And so I think Partnership, again, acknowledge that we make this decision without the full amount of information. That's early on the process. But right now, what we're hearing from other Partnership counties is they're actually very satisfied with the access with Partnership Health Plan. Certainly, the financial risk, I don't think is there, and we can get more information on that. From Partnership Health Plan, again, they're going to be providing their financials to the state, I believe, in the next couple of months that that report is due. But other than that, I don't think there are other, unless you have additional questions. I think that's most of the points I wanted to hit.
I think the only other question was on the alternative medications. Would it provide more flexibility on those for COVID? And I think...
Yeah, probably not. I'll say, I mean, the Medi-Cal benefit is the same. And so, again, it's back to, these plans have different ways of managing that benefit. But, yeah, as far as what's covered and what's not covered, for the most part, it's similar across different plans. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Dr. Oldham, Partnership Health, do they have contracts with Sacramento County health providers? I know they have contracts with Placer County health providers, but what about Sacramento County for referrals for specialty care?
Yeah, I think it depends. Certainly, some of them, and I know, you know, the large health systems, you know, because Partnership operates in Yolo County, so I know they have contracts with many of the large, you know, large health systems that operate in both Placer and Yolo. But, you know, they're not contracted. Partnership doesn't operate in Sacramento County. But, and again, I think that generally, they try to find specialty care and primary care actually in the county or in the counties that they serve as opposed to sending beneficiaries down the hill to Sacramento. But we can check on that to see if they, to what extent they have contracts with providers in Sacramento County.
Thank you. There are specialists, primarily pulmonary, cardiac, excuse me, cardiac care in Sacramento County where a lot of patients go to. So I think that's important. When I have a conversation, this has been really, I've had a lot of conversations with Partnership Health, with California Health and Wellness, with Anthem. I've really appreciated the conversations that we've had. And this is, this is actually a really challenging decision. And it's too bad all these folks aren't here because we've been talking about other issues. But I, this has been weighing on my mind for the last probably two weeks as I've been having all these conversations with our current providers, with our staff about how do we provide our residents the best care that they can get under the Medi-Cal system. And I really appreciate the work that our current partners have done. It's not easy to get specialty care right now, especially mental health care for our communities. And as I've been interacting with staff, it's like, I've asked a lot of questions. So I know folks are watching Mr. Prozio and others. I've asked a lot of questions about Partnership Health, asked a lot of questions with our staff, and was even open to this additional regional model with El Dorado County. They're now out of the option even to have a further conversation. And I think it's just really important that they hear, we just want to make sure we've got really good care for our residents. It's frustrating to me that the state of California is telling us what we can and can't do with providing the care for our residents. That's very frustrating. And I appreciate the state finally did hear that there were counties that had concerns about how the model plan was working and has given us the option to make a change. I want to, I want to move forward with this, but I do think that even in light of the El Dorado County decision, we might need to be aware that Partnership Health may not end up being our option from the state of California. I want to make sure we're continuing to work with our current partners because they are still our current partners for the next couple of years, providing care for our residents. And I think in the last couple of years, they've worked hard to step up to the plate to do that. But I do, you know, I'm open to further conversations, especially in sort of a second track in case this plan doesn't go forward with the state of California, which a little bit of me is concerned that it may not happen. So I think we need to move forward. But I do want to let the other providers know how much I appreciate the work that they've done and appreciate the conversations that we've had.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie. Is there a motion?
Please, you all, please make a motion, please, Jim.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, this is an ordinance authorizing the county to join Partnership Health Plan of California Commission. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No. So we'll move on. Thank you very much for the great dialogue on that item. And I agree with Bonnie. We've had a number of briefings from staff and many conversations. So... conversations, so well-informed, and very confusing items to deal with. So Jamie Wright is here. Thank you for being patient with us today, Jamie. Placer Commuter Express.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today, I am before you asking for the, asking for the board's action to authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute Amendment Number Two to our Contract 000976 with MV Transportation Inc. to provide operations for Placer Commuter Express for an additional one year, in the amount not to exceed $434,528 for the period of November 1st, 2021, through October 31st, 2022. On October 3rd, 2017, your board did award the contract with MV Transportation to provide commuter, drivers for our commuter service down into Sacramento. Last year, I came before your board and asked for Amendment Number One, for our first one-year extension to be approved. We did do that, and I am before you today asking for the second one-year extension to be approved. This is our final year of this contract, so we will be going out to RFP. This is our commuter service. So due to COVID, and the reduction of many workers working in their offices down in Sacramento, we have reduced service over the last year and a half. We expect that reduction to continue. We're hearing mixed things about when people are going back to work. So we will continue to kind of monitor the need and provide service based on need for those commuting into Sacramento. The pricing for this one-year extension is a 3.1 increase, which is in line, and was approved as part of the initial, the original contract in October of 2017. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions, board members? Not seeing any. Do we have any public comment on this item? Nobody on Zoom either. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval? A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. And our final open session item today, item number nine. This is an urgency ordinance on the river fire debris removal program. Dave?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dave Atkinson, Assistant Director of Emergency Services, closing out your open session items today with an urgency ordinance as part of a river fire, next step in our recovery. As you recall from our previous conversations, about 50 homes were destroyed in Placer counties from the river fire. As part of our efforts in moving forward with that, a local health emergency was declared, and that allowed us then to provide, or to request from the state, some additional assistance in our cleanup efforts. The first phase of that is called Household Hazardous Waste Removal, and actually, I'm pleased to report that that work took about a week and is already done. So the urgency ordinance before you today is the, it's phase two of our debris removal program that the state puts together for us, and that consists essentially of two options for folks. Option one, they can opt into the state-run program, at no cost to themselves. Essentially, they complete a right of entry, and then they allow the state to come in with their contractors to do the debris removal, as well as remove any contaminated soils, do soils testing, and then essentially turn the site back over to the property owner, ready to go for rebuilding as they choose. Second option, for those who choose not to go with the state plan, have an option to hire their own contractor at their own expense, still comply with the same level of service as would be done under the state. So the soils testing, all of that would have to be done to the same level, and they would have to prepare a work plan that would have to be submitted to Environmental Health for review and approval before they start. So essentially, the urgency ordinance before you today essentially puts the framework together for that program, and allows us to move forward with requesting that service from the state. As we all know, it rained last night, thankfully, but that also puts a fine point on the fact that there isn't some urgency to get this debris removal done, as we want to make sure that that gets cleaned up to the best as it can before the rains really start this winter. And so that's the reason that this is an urgency ordinance this morning. And if I'm correct, and we need a four-fifths vote for an urgency ordinance?
That's correct.
And in terms of financial costs, staff is prepared to continue to do this work under the existing budget for environmental health. I am pleased to report that we got word on this weekend that the federal major disaster declaration has now been expanded to also include debris removal, which means that the county's cost share is going to be significantly, really reduced. I believe we're going from 25% to 6 and 1/4%. So considerable reduction in the county's share. I have Jason Felipe with me from Environmental Health, and we're both here to answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you very much, Dave. Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any. Any public comment on this item? And as you mentioned, it is an urgency ordinance. We need a unanimous vote of the four of us here today. So I'll entertain a motion.
A second.
And then we'll do a roll call vote.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Gustafson?
Aye.
Appreciate the board support.
Thank you for all the support for these folks out there. They've gone through a lot. Okay, we're ready to go into closed session. Karen, take it away.
The board will now adjourn to closed session. Under our closed session agenda under existing litigation in Number 1A, County of Placer versus GNS Carpets Mills, this will be dropped from closed session. To be heard on closed session on their existing litigation will be in Ray Garland-Lu, and we have two items under anticipated litigation, two potential cases to discuss.
Okay. We're back from closed session. Karen, will you give the report?
The board meant in closed session to consider one item of existing litigation in Ray Garland-Lu. The board heard a report and authorized settlement. On the first potential case of anticipated litigation, the board heard a report and provided direction. On the second potential case, the board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, and we stand adjourned.